Good evening, everyone. Sorry we're a few minutes late, but we've been working through the technology. We have the best people on it. And we'll get started. The first thing I would like to say is, due to the public health concerns relating to COVID-19, this meeting is being conducted remotely pursuant to Governor Cuomo's executive orders, including Executive Order 202.1, which did suspend certain provisions of the open meetings law. But this meeting is being video recorded and is being broadcast live on the Town of Penfield's website, www.penfield.org, and on the Town of Penfield's Government Access Channel 1303. The meeting will also later be transcribed. If you'd like to address this board on any of the public hearing matters, there will be a specific public participation opportunity for each matter after the boards responded to the applicant's presentation with its questions or concerns. How can you participate? Well, you can call 585-340-8771, or you can submit a question or a concern through the town's website at www.penfield.org. Tonight's meeting is going to actually take place in three parts. The first part is going to be our work session, where the board will tend to any unfinished business from prior meetings. We do have a couple of table matters tonight. And then we'll try to clarify any issues we may have with tonight's applications. After the work session ends, we'll immediately go into our public hearing sessions. And how those will be conducted is, we will ask the applicant to give us name and address, and then explain to the board why the relief being requested should be granted. Once the applicant is done, hopefully I will remember to remind the public how they can comment if they like. And then after the application, the board will have some questions, and then we'll open it up to public comment. After the public hearings are finished, there'll be an adjournment. We'll probably, it'll take a recess sometime tonight because we have a pretty packed agenda. And actually, we, the board will deliberate on each application. Usually, we do it at the end of the night, but since we've been doing this remotely, we actually deliberate right after the application is finished. So, once the hearing's done, we'll have a deliberation and a vote. And I like to point out, each and every month, that the town goes to great lengths to make sure that the public is aware that applications are going to be heard, so that citizens are fully informed of their right to comment on the application. The town does that by posting the agenda on the website, by sending postcards to neighbors who live within a certain number of feet of the property, which is the subject of the application. The town also requires the applicants to post the signs on the property. We've all seen them. They sort of look like for-sale signs. And we like this because we do want to hear comments and concerns that people have, because it helps us do our job. So, with that being said, I'd ask everyone to rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, and justice for all.
Great. Thank you all for your patience. And Andy, may we have the first application, please?
Did you want to do the table ones first?
And as a matter of fact, I did, yes. So, I was going right to the public hearing, folks, but we do have our work session. So, the first item on the agenda is actually approval of the minutes from the prior meeting. Can I get a motion to approve those?
Make a motion to approve as written.
I'll second.
Okay, so we have a motion by Andrus to approve the minutes as written, and a second by Marie. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Mike? Okay. Well, we have a three-person vote, so we'll consider the minutes to be approved. The first tabled application, which is 20Z-0030, has been withdrawn by the applicant. Is that correct, Andy?
Correct.
All right. So, we'll just consider that matter off the agenda. The second tabled application, Mike, I think that's yours?
No, it's mine.
Oh. I just, you know, one more strike and I guess I'm out. Go ahead, Marie.
Okay. I think we have to vote on Seeker still, correct, Andy?
Yes.
All right. So, I'd like to move that this is a type-two action, subject to no further review.
I'll second.
All right. We have a motion by Marie to declare this a type-two action under Seeker, and we have a second by Andrus. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Mike? Okay. Three votes is enough to pass, so the Seeker's passed. Go ahead, Marie, to the merits.
So, for, on the merits of the application, I recognize fully that this is a substantial variance. But I think the tipping point in the favor of approving this is that it is on a 15-acre piece of land, and that does allow for, when you, when you, when you look at the whole package and you compare it to what the building is sitting on, it does make a difference. With regard to the merits of the application, I appreciate that the, that the applicant did go and check with his neighbor. I think that was really important, and I appreciate that he did that. And the neighbor has, in fact, I guess, said that he has no issue with the application, correct?
Yep.
Okay. So, I don't think there's going to be an undesirable change created in this area. As a matter of fact, it's a fairly rural-looking land surrounding it, so I think that the barn will fit right in. I know that you have said that you have tried to place this in different locations where you wouldn't need as substantial a variance, but due to the lay of the land and a wet area, it has to be where it is. And like I said, I know this is substantial variance, but again, this is a large property. And I don't see an adverse impact created anywhere by approving this. And of course, usually, things like this are self-created.
So, we have a motion to approve, and we got a second?
Yes, second.
We did get a second from Andrus, and the only thing that I would add, Marie, is that going back and looking at the letter of intent, the applicant did reference several other properties with barns, maybe not exactly apples-to-apples, but in that area of the town, there are a lot of, a lot of barns and accessory structures. So, I totally agree with you that we're not going to see any change to the character of the neighborhood. So, any other comments? Okay, we have a motion to approve the application and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Mike? Once again, we have three votes, which is sufficient for the motion to carry, so we'll consider it carried.
Mike is putting his hand up as an aye, I think.
Oh, he is?
Yeah.
I did.
All right. Just heard you there.
You did? Yeah, I said, I voted in favor.
All right.
Thanks.
Very, on both motions, Seeker and the merits?
Yeah.
We will note that. Okay. Very good, then. Does anybody have any questions for clarification on any of tonight's agenda items, or?
I have a quick question on the last one.
Okay.
The putting green.
Yes.
We are just talking about the putting green, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm sorry. Say that again? Yes.
Not the dog.
Got it. Okay. There was something in one of the emails that wondered about that, but that's okay.
Andrus, anything?
I don't think so, no.
Hey, Mike?
No.
Do you have any, you have any questions for clarification on any of the apps?
I do not.
Okay. Well, then, if, unless I'm missing something else on the agenda? No? Okay. Let's go right to the public hearings, and we'll have the first application, please.
Scott Zapia, Pierpont Visual Graphics Incorporated, 15 Elser Terrace, Rochester, New York, 14611. On behalf of Rochester Regional Health, request a special permit under Section 250-10.3A of the code to allow greater building-mounted signage than permitted under Section 250-10.13-C of the code at 2200 Penfield Road. The property is currently or formerly owned by Penfair Plaza LLC and is owned general business, SBL number 140.01-1-3.1. This is application number 20Z-0036.
We can have the applicant brought up visually and state your name and address, and then proceed with your application request, please.
Yes, my name's Robert Grubb. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, I work for Rochester Regional Health. And, there it is. So, I'm a project manager for Rochester Regional Health, working on this project. We initially showed this concept to this board quite a while ago, with all the separate departments listed. We understood there was to be a second application, which is this. What the concept was, was to have one entrance, the prominent corner, as you see, top right-hand corner, that is a prominent entrance for all folks to enter. It is the place where people walk in and check in. We did not want to, we decided we did not want to have separate entrances with each individual sign throughout the building. We thought this would be a better solution for the community, one entrance, one location for all the signs. There it is. That's the prominent, right there, is the prominent corner. One entrance, it's right on the corner of 250, 441. You can see it from 441. And instead of having signs throughout that whole front entrance for each entrance, we decided to just do this, so that you have one entrance, one sign package. As you all know, we've invested an awful lot of money into this plaza. It's, it has a whole new footprint out in front with new parking. It has a whole, it'll be a whole new concept for the exterior of the building. It's going to look really nice for the community. There's a top look of it, that you can see. This is the old parking area. It has been completely redone. I'm not sure who's been aware of that, but we put islands in, we've broken it up, so that it's not as hazardous for folks to get into that area. And with that being said, we've made it very, very safe for folks to get from the parking area into the building at that one location. We would like to have this signage approved as shown in the first slide.
Would you?
Anybody have any questions?
Yes. Would you describe how the signs are, what color they are, or how they're lit?
Yeah, I can, I can do that. This is Terry Zapia with Pierpont Visual Graphics in Rochester, New York. I'm partners with Scott Zapia, whose name was on the application, so. But basically, the way we're going to do the first one, which we'll call it A, is that one, the color of the background behind the letters Rochester Regional Health will match the color of the brick that's on the building. That's why the colors were selected to that. If you've driven by, you can see in the, in the left corner there. So, I scan the brick, and we're going to make that background area the same color as the building. Then the letters will be internally illuminated with LEDs, so the only thing that will illuminate will be the letters. The background of each of the cabinets will not illuminate. So, it'll be very easy to read it, very legible, very clean, and not be overpowering, you know, blaring in your face as far as this is a sign. It'll be easy to read and look very nice. So, this is very similar to what we've done in a lot of the other sites for Rochester Regional Health. If you're familiar with, you know, Goodman and 104, it's a similar type of sign there that's, was used.
So, what you're saying is, the brown block that you're showing behind the letters would actually be the higher facade of the, of the building in that spot?
Yes, it would match, it would match the build, that, that brick color would, so this way, it blends in, and the only thing you're going to see are the letters, the white letters that illuminate. So, it'll look, I mean, it looks nice. I'm sorry, what was that?
Those are, those are back illuminated?
Yeah, it's, it's like, it's a cabinet. The brown area is, is actually a cabinet that has LED lighting and the power and everything right inside it, and then the only thing that illuminates would be the letters.
Okay.
And that was in, that's in the first area, number A.
Right. Can you describe why you need Rochester Regional Health on four signs in the building, two on each side?
Go ahead, Bob. You can probably answer that.
I would, you know, if you look at the building, it's quite large, from one end to the other. People are driving by 45 miles an hour. We want them to be able to see where this location is, so that we can service, you know, their healthcare needs. And it is a quite large, this rendition makes that corner look bigger than it actually is. We want it to be prominent, but that building is very large on that side. As you know, we put an addition on the back, so that it would be completely flush along the side on the 250 side. See that corner right there? It's not shown, but we put an addition right there, and that whole side of the building is very large.
So, it's also very close to the road, and it's also a very large sign on the west corner, the southwest corner. So, I still not sure I understand why you need, other, I understand why you'd like Rochester Regional Health in four spots on the building, but one of the things we're, we have to look at is whether it's needed to adequately identify the distance. And I'm having a little trouble, even though that is a large, substantial building, seeing why you need the names there in four different spots, particularly on the Fairport Nine Mile Point Road side.
Yeah, we just want to make sure folks can find us. I know that sometimes, when there's an emergent person in need of healthcare, they're, they're not necessarily thinking clearly, and sometimes, it's very difficult to even see a sign, to locate the place they're supposed to go to. You know, they're under duress at times.
So, when you look at the four locations, the one on the left is going to be in the area back where A is, which is quite a ways back. In this way, it tells the patients who are driving by that all these services underneath are part of Rochester Regional Health. And then when you're driving on Route 250, the only thing you could see in that corner at that time is the one that faces west, which is number C. So, the only time you're, you're really going to, you're really not going to see them all at the same time. D was meant for the people driving on 441, and then the fourth location is way at the other end of the plaza, kind of in an area that's set in for the lab. And that's typically, I mean, that's the typical marking for the Rochester Regional Health lavatories. So, D is the one at the corner that you'll see mainly from, on 441, but E is probably, and I don't know the distance, but it's probably 300 feet down the other end, and kind of set in an alcove area, and that's just for the laboratory. And that's how Rochester Regional Health labels each one of their services, by putting their logo and the name underneath it, not just lavatories. So, everything is set into their logo of what the service is, so people know that they're going to the Rochester Regional location. So, that's basically the reason why there's four different logos, only because it's, the building is so large, and there's different departments, you know, set for like the laboratory, and, and again, different views from the street, whether you're on 250 or 441.
If I understood you correctly, there's no lav, there's no entrances where that laboratory's on?
That's correct. Yep, they have their own separate, which is probably, yeah, 240 feet away from, from that main entrance, C and D. The only way you can get to the lab is all the way into E, 240 feet away, set into that alcove.
And you don't think that's?
There's an interior entrance into the lab as well. It's, it would be an escorted service.
Yeah, it's more, but people, patients coming from, from, for a lab are only going to be entering into E for that lab, not really anywhere else.
Can you put up the screen with the letters again, when you're referencing them, please? Oh. Thank you, Andy, when they're referencing it, okay.
Yeah, so E.
Or E?
E really isn't on this photograph. It's way around the corner to the, it's right next to the Verizon store.
And, 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 am I understanding you, Mike, I'm sorry to jump in here, but am I understanding you guys correctly that when people are going to the lab, there is going to be a dedicated entrance for that?
Yes.
At the far eastern end of the building?
Correct.
Okay.
It's, it's almost like right next to the, I think it's, I think there's a dry cleaner there, or Verizon, CVS.
It's a tailor. It's a tailor near Verizon.
Yep.
And where's the entrance to the urgent care going to be? Is that the southwest corner?
Correct.
The big corner?
Yep, right there.
And, and so, other than the lab, everybody's going to use that entrance on the southwest corner?
Correct.
All right.
Is it a saying?
Sorry, Mike. Go ahead. No, I just wanted you to recite the total square footage of all the signs together.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear.
The total square footage of all the signs together, and maybe, so give us that and compare it to what you're entitled to under the code.
Thank you.
I notice that's 413 square feet for everything. I'm not sure exactly what the code is. I think we're under what the code would be, but I'm not, I can't answer that question.
The code would allow 490 square feet, based on the front.
So, you're under that, but you're way over on the number of signs allowed, is what the, the issue we're dealing with tonight.
Yeah, because we have only one entrance instead of three different entrances.
Well, you have two entrances, if you count the one for the lab.
No, I understand. I'm saying for each practice, we don't have a separate entrance. You know, there's, there's basically four departments, the lab, the, the immediate care, the primary care, and the pediatrics. So, instead of four entrances, now there's just two entrances.
Yeah.
Right. All right, I don't have any other questions.
Any other questions from the board? Go ahead, Marie.
Yes, I didn't see it in the application. Are there going to be any freestanding monument signs?
No. Nope. There's a, yeah, nothing, nothing's being added to, so there's going to be no freestanding signs anywhere.
Okay, and what about the ones that are there? They're just going to stay there?
Which ones are you referring to?
There are some signs.
The directory?
Isn't there, isn't there like a monument sign on the?
Oh, there's a, yeah, there's a pile, just a directory for all the tenants.
Okay.
So, the only thing we're having on there is just Rochester Regional Health. It's not going to list everybody.
No, but it's, it is another sign, though.
Yeah, it just lists them like every, like another tenant, but I mean, you know, so Verizon's on there, CBS is on there.
So, what you're saying is you're the same size? You would be the same size?
Yes.
Okay.
It's the same sign.
Yeah, it's the same sign.
Yeah, I guess my concern is, again, with just the sheer number of building-mounted signs, which is why we're here. I understand why you'd want to have a sign for the lab, because you have a separate entrance for that. I also understand why you'd want to have an urgent care sign, because people need to get there and know where they're going. I'm less sold on the need for the sign that lists all the practices, and the reason I say that is because it seems like a lot of those practices, not all, but many of the people going there will have been there before. And I also think people going there for the first time are going to be looking for Rochester Regional Health, and you have the big sign as well. So, you haven't convinced me about the need for the one sign that lists all the practice. Urgent Care, Lab, and Big Rochester Regional, with frankly, a huge building.
Right.
And honestly, that's, we've been seeing a lot of that between you and your organization and U R M C, that a lot of signage on those.
Yep.
In, in that area. Go ahead, Mike.
What do you feel about E, which is the other corner side?
Can you go back to the, yeah, Andy's going back. B as in boy?
No, D as in?
Daniel.
Yeah.
Yes, yeah, when I'm in trouble, that's what she says.
He.
Could you pull that, where that's handwritten? Or pull up whatever you do.
You want the map, or you want the?
No, that's the one.
Yeah, right here.
Okay, so that's, that's facing south.
Correct. And it's a smaller sign.
And it's 300 feet from the other one facing south, which is for the lab?
Correct.
Is there, is there a, there's only, the pylon sign is on 250, right? There's no pylon on 441? Like, if I'm coming from the east?
Yeah, there's one next to, it's way in, it's, it's quite a ways away. It's all by, it's over by all these.
Okay. And you guys are going to be on that, too?
Yeah, it'll just have the name on there. It'll, it'll be, relatively, pretty simple.
Right. Okay. Mike, to answer your question, we can discuss that. I, I want to think a little bit more about that and hear what everybody else has to say.
Sure.
I think, Dan, I think I'm on the same side as you are in terms of, you know, I see D makes, you know, the two on the corner, basically, that, you know, the, both of those are Regional Health, the larger ones, kind of identifying where people walk in, makes the most sense. I, I'm not really seeing A as being a benefit to cars driving by in terms of its size, because I don't think you can read any of that as you're driving by, as an indicator of this is where I'm going and this is what I'm seeing.
Yeah.
Or, or what I'm looking for. And then for the entrance for E and urgent care, I think both of those signs make, make sense to me.
Yeah.
Okay.
Especially if we're keeping names on pylon signs, too. We're, you know, in theory, we're adding two more pylon signs into the sign package, because they're listed on that as well.
Yeah.
And we usually, and usually, we include pylon signs in everything.
Okay. Any other questions or comments from the board at this point, before I open it up to comment from the public?
No.
All right. Okay, so let's see. I don't see anything on the call-in.
But if someone did want to call in, they would call 340-8771.
That is true. Andrus has my back. 340-8771, if you have a comment on this, or go to the www.penfield.org and submit an electronic comment. Suppose I should have done that before we asked our questions, but nothing coming in, so we'll, we'll give it a minute. Do we, is there a, is a minute enough for these comments through the website? Two minutes, maybe?
I think so. I don't know exactly what the delay is, but.
David, there's typically about a 90 seconds delay to any of the web streams.
Okay. Well, maybe Marie will sing us a song for 90 seconds. What do you think?
I don't think you want to do that.
No?
Do we need a motion?
Let's wait about another 30 seconds, Mike, and then, and then.
I meant on Marie, I meant on Marie singing.
Oh. No, I've withdrawn that one. Oh, no, I've withdrawn that one, very good.
Thank you.
Okay, still, I see no comments, so Mike, why don't we proceed with the seeker?
Yes, I'm going to move for seeker that this is an unlisted action, an issue of negative declaration, no adverse environmental impact.
Moved, second.
Okay, so we have a motion by Mike to declare this an unlisted action and to further issue a negative declaration, and we have a second on that from Marie. Any further comment on the seeker? All right, all those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
They should have sung that.
And now, Mike, on the merits?
Yes, I tend to agree with the analysis that you had, Dan, with regards to sign A. I know that horse, building mounted signs is usually more than we allow, although we have made exceptions for some of the other medical buildings in the area. I'm going to move that we grant the signs for B, C, D, and E, as, as represented, you know, on drawing. I think it is a large expanse of building and people seeking medical attention need to know where to go. And I also think that the overall size and the way they're set out generally goes well with the size of the building. Well, for that reason, I would need to approve the four signs, but not the fifth building A one. I don't think that you can see that readily.
Okay, so Mike has made a motion to approve the signs, and I'm, I'm going from the, the lead sheet here, so we have, well, Mike, I, I don't want to change your mo, your motion, why don't you, um.
He said B, C, D, E.
B, C, D, from the lead sheet, right? Let's go to the, your depiction, Andy, and let's just have Mike give us his letters.
I think they're the same.
The, the written, handwritten letters one, maybe a slide down? Yeah, you see that, Mike?
Yes, I, yes.
Which ones are you making your motion on?
The, the one on the far left, A, I'm, I'm not allowing that.
Okay.
My motion is to exclude that.
And everything else.
To allow, yeah, the urgent care, the big Rochester Regional Health sign, which is D, the smaller one on the other things, which is D, and the laboratory one that's designated as E. So those, the four to the right.
All right, I think we're all clear on that, right?
And I think we also want to make note that there's two names on pylon signs for each of the highways.
Right, so did we get a second on Mike's motion?
Second.
Andres has seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Okay, four, nothing, thank you. And next application, please.
Frank Sudor, 252 Webster Road, Webster, New York, 14580. On behalf of the India Community Center of Rochester, requests approval for a modification of a conditional use under section 250-13.3 and section 250-5.1-E1A of the code, to allow the construction of a storage building at 2171 Monroe County Line Road. The property is currently or formerly owned by the India Community Center of Rochester Incorporated and is zoned RA-2, SBL number 141.02-1-5.1. This is application number 20Z-0037.
Okay, applicant, if you can identify yourself, give us name and address, and then proceed with the presentation.
Yes, my name is Frank Sudori, 252 Webster Road, I'm the general contractor, and we proposed to build a 16 by 20 storage shed. I talked to the building department, Andy Sevegas, regarding the distance from the existing building to the new build, and we discussed the firewall as well as the overhang, and he seemed to think everything would work just fine.
Can you just tell a little about the, I guess, the location of, of this storage building in proximity to the structure that was built there? In terms, just give us a little bit of the, you know, lay of the land?
Yes, the storage building will be directly to the right of the existing building. And I did include a picture of the existing building along with the storage building would look like, and, and the storage building being 20 feet is an exact duplicate of the 30-foot right side of the existing building. So we're going to carry the same overhangs, roof pitch, even the siding, the soffin, all the same colors. Here we go. Yeah, even the brick veneer will be carried over to the storage building as well.
Excellent, thank you.
So aesthetically, it would, it would complement the existing building to a T.
Excellent, thank you. How about exterior lighting? Will, will the building be illuminated? Will the areas outside the building be illuminated?
No illumination is necessary, it's only a storage building, but we want it to look like it belongs there. So there's no electricity, no water, just basic storage with the overhead door, no windows, other than the overhead door.
Okay, any concerns in terms of, you know, blocking egress to the, to the building or sidewalks or things like that? Any, any issues with that, that you might see?
No, we're keeping it far enough away from the ADA ramp, and it would have no consequence with people using that ramp. There's plenty of room between the two buildings, and we have a six-foot approach for handicap to go up the ADA ramp.
Excellent. In terms of the use, will this be used late hours of the nights, crashing sounds and smashing and loud noises coming out when people are moving things in and out, or, I guess, describe the use of it, if, if you know?
The use would be for an occasional art display, occasional setup for tables and chairs, so that would all happen during the daytime, not during the nighttime. So there would be no extra noise created, it would be strictly during regular hours. And the noise would be just rolling the, like, the art displays up the ramp, they have rollers on them, so it wouldn't really have any noise consequence whatsoever.
Excellent, thank you, I have no further questions.
And before I ask other board members, I just want to remind, remind members of the public, if they have any comments on this application, please call now, 340-8771, or send in a comment through the penfield.org website. So having said that, Marie, any questions?
Where are the materials that you're going to store in the storage building, being stored now?
Um, they're basically still in the open space, is, is of yet, because of the COVID, there's not much going on with, you know, people coming and going, but once the COVID is released, then we would need to store those so we could use the classrooms. Right now, the classrooms are not being used because there is no classes.
Okay, well, before COVID, where were they being stored?
Pardon me?
Before COVID, where were they being stored?
Uh, we didn't actually have them, that came about after the COVID, about the art displays, they're doing, local artists are displaying their artwork on 12 units that are quite large, they're 12 feet long, and they're about six feet high, that came about after the construction of the building.
Okay, I don't have any more questions.
Yeah, so, so this proposed building is not going to be used to store equipment or machinery or anything like that?
Absolutely not, tables, chairs, and the art displays, that's it.
Okay, Mike, any questions?
No, I don't, thank you.
Okay, I don't see any comments, nobody waiting in queue on the phone, and I don't see any comments through the website either, so let's proceed with the seeker.
Okay, this is a type-two action with no further, further review required.
All right, I'll second that, so we have Andres making a motion to declare this a type-two action, and a second by me. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
All right.
And then I will move to approve the modification as conditional use permit, to approve the storage structure. He, he's really, you know, in terms of the issues, there's, you know, there's no real issues with lighting, noise, sounds to be minimal, it's going to be a daytime use, light use type things that are, you know, that are rolled in and out on casters, and you know, where it's, its placement is, it's difficult to see actually from anywhere else on, you know, the surrounding property, the way it's built. It's going to match exactly, so it's going to almost blend in with, with the building, so I think it's going to, you know, be a, a nice fit for there.
Yeah, I'll second, I'll second that motion to approve, and I agree with those comments. Any further comment from the, from the board? Okay, we have a motion to approve by Andres, second by me, all those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome, next application.
Justin Vaca, 923 Furman Road, Fairport, New York, 14450, requests approval for a conditional use under section 250-13.3 and section 250-5.1-E1H of the code, to allow a horse boarding operation at 1195 Salt Road. The property is currently or formerly owned by Raymond J. Benoit III and is zoned RA-2, SBL number 095.02-2-4.00, or 011, application number 20Z-0038.
Okay, if we have the applicant here, can the applicant identify himself or herself and proceed with the presentation?
Yes, good afternoon, good evening, everyone, can you hear me?
Yes.
This is Justin Vaca and my wife Kate Vaca, so we just recently purchased this residence October 26th, and we've been here for a few weeks now. So what we're proposing isn't really to change anything, so the previous owners had barn and pastures and riding arena already, and horses being boarded there. So what we propose is just to continue the operation as it was being done previously. So again, that would be to board up to seven horses and allow for those boarders to come and visit their horses, to use the riding ring to ride their horse, and potentially in the future, to allow training students to come into the riding ring and learn how to ride. There won't be any showing being done there, and there won't be any large crowds, noise should be at a minimum, there's no megaphones or loudspeakers. There will be, in the future, a horse trailer or two parked in the, in the back near the barn, but otherwise, as you see it today, is how it's going to be in the future.
Thanks for that, you answered a lot of my questions, I still have a few. How many horses were in that place previ, in the stable previously?
I believe it was, when we, when we purchased it, there were five, plus a donkey, but that owner did have seven at one, at one time before, because he had his horse there.
Okay.
He had sent that horse down to Florida where they moved, when they put their house up for sale.
Okay, I just want to interrupt and again, remind people, if they have comments on this application, please call 340-8771, or go through the town website, penfield.org. I know that we've had, excuse me, some emails submitted prior to the meeting, which I'm sure we'll discuss, but again, I'm sorry to interrupt you, Marie, go ahead.
No, that's fine, so it's fair to say that you're not increasing the amount of horses that were there prior?
That is correct, yeah, we won't be pasture boarding any horses, there's seven stalls in the barn, and we will not exceed seven horses on the property.
And then how many, will you have any additional employees there?
No, so we, my wife and I will be the ones responsible for operating the barn, taking care, we won't have a caretaker living on the property, anything like that.
And would people be able to access their horse 24/7?
Not 24/7, we, we have established board agreements with each of the boarders, and the hours of operation, you know, for them to visit is between, I believe it's 6:00 AM to 10:00 PM, but most of the time, they'll be coming during daylight hours.
Are you planning on any signage?
We may post a sign, I mean, that would be a separate application, I assume.
It would.
At, at the, you know, the end of our, our driveway at the road, that's a possibility, but, but certainly a separate application. We may post a sign on the barn itself, but I don't, I don't believe that would require a permit for that.
So the only thing I would say is that if this application were to be approved, that you would need to follow all the instructions and directions for a sign?
Absolutely, yes.
What about any lessons?
Yes, so we, we do plan on having lessons, one of the boarders is an instructor, and so we will allow her to have one-on-one lessons, so it won't be crowds of people, it would just be her and her students, and, and the horse that she's riding, and that's it.
And you are across the street from another stable that actually does have shows and things, correct?
Yes, we are aware of that.
On their website, right. Okay, any concerns for, you know, protecting the horses, could they get out, could they wander the neighborhood, could they do anything?
No, so, I mean, the barn is, is secure, the pastures are surrounded by electric fence, and, for the most part, and the rest of it is hard, paneling, fencing, yeah.
Okay, I don't have any more questions.
Have you folks seen the, the, I believe it's two emails that we received?
Yes, I did review those, we actually, my wife and I went over today to one of them and had a nice chat with, with, with one of the couples, and we attempted to do that with the other couple, but they weren't home. But we reached out to them as well, and they wished us good luck tonight.
Hey, there's just, the emails have some questions that I think we should, can, can you pull those up, Andy?
I think you did address most of them.
Yeah, most of them you did.
Yeah, I think one of the ones we didn't address is the smell, so how, how will the waste be removed? So how it, how it was being done before, before we purchased the property by the previous owner, they were keeping a manure pile very close to the barn, and then they would spread the manure in the pastures, and we planned doing something similar, but keeping the manure at the back end of the property, so the, the most western portion of the property, furthest away from any residences, so I think, if anything, it'll be an improvement.
Okay, I just want to.
Sure.
Are you okay to go through them, you're satisfied that they've, it seems to me they have, but I just want to give everybody a.
Yeah, I was listening for all the answers, and the waste one was the only one I think you didn't really cover, and there's, you know, no caretaker. you didn't really cover. And there's, you know, no caretaker or anything like that. It's very similar to what was going on before.
Right, no plan to expand parking?
Right.
That's correct.
Okay, well, let me see if anybody's on the phone. I don't see anybody on the phone. I don't see anything through the website. We have these two prior emails that we've discussed. Any other comments from the board?
I just have one for Andy. In the past part of these orders, do you know of any complaints to the town about this property, when they had horses there before?
I'm not aware of any, no.
Okay. Good question.
Yeah, great.
All right. No further comments, Marie. Why don't we proceed with the seeker?
And I do want to thank you also, Mr. Vaca, for talking to your neighbor. I think that was really helpful. So I'd like to move this as a type 2 action pursuant to seeker, requiring no further review.
I'll second.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Marie, seeker motion to declare it a type 2 action, and I'm going to give the second to Mike, just because he's really working hard tonight.
It's tough to get that voice in there.
Boy, you wouldn't be very good at Jeopardy, Mike, remotely.
No, I know. You're right.
Okay, so seeker motion by Marie, second by Mike. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, on the merits of the application, I'm going to make a motion to approve a conditional use permit. This really is in keeping with the general environs. There are tons of stables along Salt Road. It's a beautiful area. I don't think this is detrimental to any of the adjacent properties. You've addressed ingress and egress, parking. You know that if you want to put up a sign, you'll have to come back to Andy and fill out the permit application for that. I see no concerns with health or safety at this point, and I appreciate, you know, the electric fences and things like that. So I just think there isn't going to be anything really that people should notice a difference in. This was a stable with some boarders before. It's still going to continue to be that way now with the new owner.
I'd like to add a comment.
Go ahead, Mike.
I think we should also mention the obvious buffering that's in place on this property. Looking at it from the aerial view, you can see it. There's trees and growth along all three sides.
There are, yes. Good point. Substantial buffering.
Yeah, the only thing that I would add is that the resolution should contain the commitments that the applicants have made regarding numbers of horses and no-shows, et cetera, et cetera. Whatever representations were made today should go in the...
Great point.
Any further discussion? Okay, did we get a second?
No.
Second.
We do now. So Marie made a motion to approve with the conditions, and Andres seconded. All, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, unanimous. Thank you, folks. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Stay in touch with your neighbors.
Yes, thank you.
Good. All right, next application, please.
I'd like to ask a question to Dave, if I could, downstairs?
Yes, sir.
Being that Mike is on the phone, through that phone number that the public can call in, that's not going to affect anybody else being able to call in, is it?
No, sir, we have local lines.
Okay. Just wanted to be sure. Thank you.
That was, you know, a tenet of lawyering is never ask a question that you don't know the answer to. So I will tell you, that was pretty brave.
Well...
Unless you knew the answer.
Pete texted me that message.
All right, very good. Next application, please.
All right, where are we here?
Donald H. Lewis Jr., PE, 3832 Corey Corners Road, Marion, New York, 14505. On behalf of Tree Image LLC, requests area variances under Section 250-14.3 of the code to allow an existing accessory storage building that is larger than permitted under Section 250-5.1-F12A of the code, with less setback than required under Section 250-5.1-F12B of the code at 3090 Atlantic Avenue. The property is currently or formerly owned by Daniel J. Sykes and is owned R-1-20, SBL number 109.04-1-17.1. This is application number 20Z-0039.
Thank you, Andy. If we can have the applicant identify himself or herself, and then proceed with the presentation.
Yes, can you hear me? My name's Don Lewis.
Yes.
I'm here representing DJ Sykes on this application. For the property right next to the town hall there, I'm sure you're all familiar with it, right at the intersection of Atlantic and Jackson. It's a five-acre parcel that was left over from the Newberry subdivision way back when. Had the existing house with, at one point, you know, beautiful barns and stuff that were there, and since had, you know, gone into disrepair. Mr. Sykes had purchased the property. They tore down the existing barn that was there. There's some remnants of the foundations. There's a masonry silo still there. With his proposed application that he has before the planning board to turn this into a five-lot subdivision, with the existing house and outbuildings being Lot 1, and then there'll be four additional residential lots, as laid out in the site plan that was provided. With this application, though, the two outbuildings are what the variances that I'm seeking here, to maintain those. The second, they're allowed to have the detached garage, because there's not an attached garage on the existing house. But the secondary structure, which is an existing frame farm shed, that's what the variance is for. One, because of the size of it, well, one because of the secondary building, I should say tertiary building, one because of the size of the building, and one because of the location as its proximity to the side and rear lot lines. The, as far as the foundation, the silo, with the proposed site plans and comments from the town, the silo that's out there will be demolished. The rest of the foundations left over from the barn will be demolished and removed with the planning board's approval of the subdivision. And the pool that's existing out there, too, will also be filled in. So when it's all said and done, the intention is to keep the house, the existing frame garage in this old farm shed that's been there for, you know, 150 years. So, and it's in good character with the existing house and what was there over the years. They just would like to keep it, just because it enhances that property and the value of it. You know, with that, I open up for questions from anybody from the board.
And before we ask any questions, I would just like to remind members of the public that if they wish to comment on this application, please call 340-8771, or submit a comment or question through the website, Penfield.org. Thank you.
Is the property where the residence and barn is vacant at the present time?
I'm sorry, I can hardly hear you, sir.
Sorry. Is somebody living in the house on the property?
Currently, Mr. Sykes is living in the house on the property. That's correct.
But his intention is to sell it?
Yes. Yes. His intention is to subdivide the property for the four additional lots and sell this property as well. He's done extensive...
Do you know how old the barn is approximately?
Oh, I do not. I do not.
The proposed houses shown on these lots?
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
There's pads for the houses proposed on the lot?
Yes.
Are those restricted to those areas, or could you move them back?
You can move those back, but I think with, there's grading plans that go with it, and the grading that I show on the grading plans, it doesn't allow for much leniency to push the houses back any further without the town planning board or the building department looking at those. The alignment of these houses is consistent with the houses that are to the north, and how close they are. That's why they're further back than the allowed 75-foot setback. These houses are aligned, so you don't have one house, you know, in front of the other. It kind of looks, it gives an odd consistency along there. So that's why I line those up.
Yeah, I guess the thing that strikes me about looking at this particular site plan is that from the point of view of the setback, you have on the north, the access road for the flag lot, which is somewhat of a buffer, and you also have a driveway, and the way the house on Lot 2 is situated, there's also quite a distance from the barn to where the house would sit. Just at that. And the houses also seem to be acclimated, so that you can't really see the barns, except from the side. True?
Don't you say that again, Mike. That was...
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I can barely make out what you're saying. I'm sorry.
Right, we've asked him to repeat it.
I guess I was making two points, and I probably would make this for my motion anyways. But the setback to the north, while shorter than the 50 feet, has a, an access road between it and the next lot to the north. And likewise, the western, the setback from the western boundary line is also quite far with a driveway in between, and quite far from the house on Lot 2. So was that done intentionally?
I still, I'm sorry, I still can't hear. I can't hear the question.
More comments than a question, which I'm going to leave you off. I don't have any other questions.
I think I can translate Mike's question. I think I caught it. He was saying, when you look at the existing barn that's on the site, was the lot line for the parcel to the north side of that, or I guess, you know, to the north, set on purpose for where they put the driveway to allow for a buffer to the next property? You know, in a sense to allow an extra, because that driveway is probably, what, 18, 20 feet wide?
Exactly, exactly.
And so I think he was just more making a case, was, you know, that done on purpose to allow for a little more of a buffer, and that he was just looking for a comment on that.
It served two purposes, the driveway location. The intention was to not have a driveway off of Atlantic Avenue, just because of, it's a busier road, and that Lot 2 location kind of sits down a bit off of, the grade is a little higher over there on the Atlantic Avenue side. So it would have been, it would have taken a lot more fill to get that house to grade. It isn't a wet area where the house is sitting. It's a little wetter back, you know, where there's, we're putting additional drainage in it to collect stuff that kind of got lost in the development from the first time around. But, and that's the intention of, that's why that house doesn't have a frontage driveway access onto Atlantic Avenue. That's why we snuck that one in there, and because there's that existing shed that kind of does, it kind of lets us do all that business, you know, in that area. And that shed kind of provides a little bit of a buffer from the existing house, too, yes.
Okay, may I ask you, how long has this matter been pending before the planning board?
We had, boy, in fact, it's funny, I've been going through comments, because I've received comments from all the agencies now, even the state DOT. So I have county comments. I think we were before the board in late September, I think, and they provided preliminary approval with comments. And most of them were drainage comments, and even the public was glad to see that this was going to be cleaned up. There's an existing commercial barn that's back there. That's what attracted the owner to it originally. He intended to have his tree operation work out of that barn, and it didn't, you know, it would have taken a special use permit. It wasn't, you know, allowed within the character of the neighborhood and all that. So that's where he's back, he's before the board, doing, you know, having this application to, you know, to provide something that belongs in this neighborhood. So, but as far as a public comment from the neighbors right directly around this property, they were in favor of it, only because it cleans the neighborhood up, and it's going to handle the drainage that some of them have in the backyards there, so.
Okay, so you were getting a little bit ahead of me there, which...
I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. It's not that hard to do. But, so I think I heard you say September is the answer to the question. You've been in front of the planning board since September?
Yes.
And being in front of the planning board with a formal application requires public notice, public meetings, and, Andy, I'll ask you, everything in terms of notice was done properly the way that it legally is required to be done?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So, having said that, I'll ask you if you've seen the email submitted by a resident on McKenna Trail, Samantha Erb.
The name sounds familiar, only because I remember her making comments at the planning board meeting. And I know the public hearing is still open, only because they wanted to see what I came up with on drainage, only because there was a lack of information. The town provided me with some information on their storm system that's just to the west of the property.
Can you pull up the email? Because honestly, the email, you'll be able to read it here, but the bottom line is, in the email, she's saying, "We just moved here three weeks ago, and we had no idea that this was happening." It really doesn't...
Oh, really?
I didn't see anything in there. Well, it's three weeks ago now. That's one of the reasons I asked you how long have you been in front of the planning board?
Yeah, oh, okay, yeah.
And it's not...
She's moved. Sorry, go ahead.
Okay. So the planning board has not yet made a decision on this. Theoretically, the planning board could say no to the, you know, I'm not on the planning board, I'm not saying that, but theoretically, they could. You are still waiting approval by the planning board.
That's correct. That's correct.
Yes. So it's in front of us, only to basically determine whether those buildings that are there now, and have been there for years, should remain as the planning board application and the development proceeds. I just want to clarify that.
Yes, yes, correct.
So if we approve this tonight, doesn't mean that anything physically is going to change there until and unless the planning board allows that. So...
That's correct. That's correct.
Let me ask this question, too, because there's concerns that Ms. Erb mentions about having to work from home during COVID, and we're all, to a certain extent, struggling with that. It's understandable. She talks about the construction noise that may occur, cutting down trees. If you were to be approved tonight and by the planning board, when do you anticipate work to be started on the subdivision as submitted?
Oh, boy, that's all...
Give me a ballpark. Is it next week? Is it March?
No, it probably wouldn't be till after the turn of the year, and even then, because of the season, unless things really got hard and frozen, the owner is going to do most of the work himself, only because he's in the construction field. So, and nobody would go in there unless the ground got really hard, and you could do earthwork during, you know, the frozen season, as they call it. You wouldn't go in there if it never got, if it never froze up. So if not, it would wait till the spring, when it would be, you know, favorably seasonal.
And I assume that whoever does work on that subdivision will do it within the requirements and the code about noise and time that you can do work, and to minimize the disruption to neighbors in the area?
Oh, definitely. There's definitely, you know, work times, work days that he can perform. And there's a little bit of cleaning up that needs to happen for him to be able to put, you know, to put the lots, I shouldn't say put the lots on the market, but in order for him to pull his first building permit. him to pull his first building permit. There's some other miscellaneous pads out there that were left from buildings. There's another pad just like this chicken bar, this, well, it was an old chicken bar at the time. Almost where the new driveway for Lot 2 sits, there's another pad that was there from years ago that they left. They tore the building down, but there's a pad there. That needs to be eliminated. There's a large, like I said, a commercial pole barn that's in the backwoods that spans Lots 3, 4, and almost on to 5. That needs to be rendered. And like I said, the pool needs to be filled in and the existing silo needs to go away. And then there's subsequent grading that needs to happen, so that these lots are all, just like if you went into a large subdivision with, you know, 150 lots where they do a section at a time, they'll do the improvements and get the subgrades ready for all 10 lots in the first section, and then start selling them off. So this is just like that, where he'll have to do some area-wide grading and drainage improvements despite selling one lot. So that way, the drainage is always taken care of as you build each lot.
So let me, let me ask you a question, and if you don't know, you don't know, but if this were to be denied tonight, would the planning board application still be pursued?
Yeah, see, what his intention was to keep this small barn.
Yeah, no, I got it, okay. I got your answer. So I guess what I would suggest is that, if it hasn't already happened, that this email from Samantha Urb find its way to the planning board, because a lot of the issues that she raises in her email frankly are planning board issues as they proceed with the application. So I think we should forward it to them.
Yeah, it sounds like it, it sounds like it. I mean, yeah.
And also, a little bit more unsolicited advice, you might have some communication with the folks that live on McKenna, more than you already have.
Right, okay.
I'm running out of words here. Any other comments from anyone? I don't see anybody on the phone calling in, and I don't see any electronic through the website, and I think that was the only, Ms. Urb's email was the only one we got before the meeting.
That's correct, yes.
Okay, well then, let's proceed with the seeker.
Will that email be sent to me to review?
Yes.
A copy? Okay.
All right, for seeker purposes, I'm going to move that this is a type 2 action, requiring no further action.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mike to declare this a type 2 action under seeker and a second by Marie. Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, let's go to the merits.
All right, on the merits, I'm going to move to approve this application. Although it's a large structure, it will be larger than the code requires. It's an existing structure, been there for years, and I don't think the additional houses surrounding it, taken in the whole, is going to make an adverse impact on the neighborhood. As I said, I'm impressed with the plan of the subdivision with regard to the placement of the potential houses in relation to this structure. I think overall, it was very creative, and for those reasons, that would need to approve.
Okay. Mike's made a motion to approve with the comments and condition. Anybody else?
I'll second.
Okay, Andres has seconded. The only thing I would add to it is that this parcel is zoned residential, and there's no request for rezoning of any sort. And a subdivision, in that sense, a subdivision on this property is allowable. And that's why we have the planning board doing its work as well. So, we have a motion...
Dan?
Yes.
I also want to put another condition that this barn not used for any commercial purpose?
That's a good idea. All right, so we'll amend Mike's motion accordingly.
I'll second it.
And Andres will resecond that. Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
I really appreciate your time and courtesy.
All right, have a good Thanksgiving.
Okay, you too, thank you.
Speaking of food, let's have the next application. How's that for a segue, Andy? I got a smile on you.
Very good. Salma Delal Fire Crust Artisan Pizza and Ice Cream, 103 Harrigate Crossing, West Henrietta, New York, 14586. Request approval for a conditional use under Section 250-13.3 and Section 250-5.6-C1A of the code to allow the operation of a restaurant and a special permit under Section 250-10.3-A of the code to allow greater building-mounted signage than permitted under Section 250-10.13-C of the code, with greater graphics, trademarks, or logos than permitted under Section 250-10.11-E of the code at 1998 Empire Boulevard. The property is owned by Empire Park Management LLC and is zoned limited business. SBL number 093.02-1-12.002. This is application number 20Z-0040.
And I'm going to interrupt you before you start. I apologize for this, but I just want the record to reflect that we did get an electronic comment on that last application. It's from Josephine Keller at 35 McKenna Trail, and all she says is, "We'd appreciate as much communication as possible as the project goes along. Thank you." So again, I'd urge the applicant to do the due diligence with the neighbors, and of course, the town will make whatever information it can available to the people that request it. So, sorry, sir, with the next application, please introduce yourself and proceed. Go ahead.
I can't hear him.
Maybe they can.
We can't, unfortunately, we can't hear you. Nope.
I think he's muted, isn't he?
Our esteemed counsel has suggested that you're muted. No, he's trying.
One's muted, one is... Can you hear me now?
Yes, barely, but go ahead, keep talking and we'll see.
You still cannot hear me?
That's better. Yes.
Is it better or not?
It is better, yes.
Oh, okay, I was using my Bluetooth, but okay, so I'll use my phone now. So this is Jigar Gandhi, I am one of the partner at Fire Crust Pizza. My two other partners, Somil Dalal and Farak Patel, they are also on the call in the meeting. And we would like to request, so we have a Fire Crust Pizza location in Henrietta. We opened our first location in Henrietta in 2018, and this is the second location that we are planning in Webster, in the Empire Park Plaza. Just to give a little bit history about this location, so it was a prior pizza area and ice cream shop. I think it used to call Benji's Pizza. And then thereafter, it was Spidericious Pizza. So we are taking that same place, and we will be making a Fire Crust Pizza. The Fire Crust Pizza, our concept is create your own pizza, so people come in, they choose, they pick their toppings, they customize their pizza the way they want. And then we have a oven which runs on 800 degree, and the pizza get done in just two minutes. So this is like a very unique kind of pizza-making concept. It's a very fast, very quick, and people can customize the way they want. This is like the first kind of pizza in Webster-Penfyl area. And then other than the pizza, we will be serving pastas, salads, wings. And we also be having ice cream as well. We have a partnership with Pittsburgh Farms Dairy. They allow us to, we are the only one where they allow us to like, you know, do the retail locations. So, we have like two separate section in the restaurant. One would be the pizza, second would be the ice cream. And we have all the ice cream products as well, including milkshakes, sundaes, and soft serve as well. Now, if you allow me, I can quickly share my screen and go through quickly how our existing building in Henrietta look likes and what were like, you know, menu item, I can go through that quickly in like, you know, a few seconds, if that's okay with you.
Well, the answer to that is yes, but could we have you give your name again?
My name, my name is Jigar Gandhi.
Okay. Is that good? All right, so go ahead with your screen sharing.
Okay, all right, yep. Right, so you guys see my screen now?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, thank you, yep. So this is our logo. And our slogan is "So Fast, So Hot," because we get the pizza done in just two minutes at 800 degree, and it's still hot. So, and we also do pizza, it's artisan pizza, make your own pizza, and plus ice cream, we have it. So, we use Italian dough, it made fresh daily. We have 50-plus ingredients to choose from, and like, you know, we use all high-quality fresh ingredients. And we fired our pizza at 800 degree. And we are local, I live in Pittsburgh, my partner live in Henrietta, so we are local, and we be proud to be local. And we also partner with local brand, Pittsburgh Farm Dairy. We have drinks, our drinks are from Johnny Ryan's, which is from Niagara Falls. So we partner for our supply and vendors, we try to partner with local vendors and suppliers. This is our menu look like, as I mentioned, it's a pizza, we have a fire roasted wing, salads, we have create your own pasta, drink and beverages, and desserts. So, this is our menu look like.
Mr. Gandhi, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but I don't think we need to worry so much about the menu, it looks delicious, and I'm sure it is.
Okay.
But if you can just kind of get into, we understand you're going to have two separate foods, let's say, you're going to have the pizza, salads, wings, and then you're also going to have ice cream. If you could get into, things like the hours of operation, the parking, the number of employees, the signage, the lights, and then we'll have a separate conversation about your request for a drive-through. But I don't mean to rush you, but the menu looks great.
Yeah, yeah. No, definitely, yeah. So our hours of operation is usually from 10 o'clock to, so from 10:00 AM to 10:00 PM. That's what like, you know, we have in Henrietta. We don't like, you know, try to stay very long in the night time, because it's a very family-oriented restaurant. So 10 to 10, our hours of operation. Parking, I don't know top of my head exactly, but we, it's in Empire Park Plaza, and the parking situation hasn't changed since like, you know, last use. So the parking will remain the same, whatever that allocated parking in that plaza. And sir, what was your other question?
I just said hours of operation, how many employees you're going to have, the lighting, the signs.
Okay, so employees, between full-time and part-time, we are expect to have, expecting to have around 15 employees. And in terms of lighting, it's, what were the lighting, like, you know, the plaza, the Empire Park Plaza has outside, we are not planning to have any additional lighting, except I wanted to share one thing here. And... Okay, so this is... All right, so this is our front, and let me zoom that out. And I wanted to make sure that we are okay with that, okay. And if you want to take a control and if you want to share, that's okay as well, because I already submitted these drawings to the town. So, that's okay as well, if you want to take control now. But basically, this is the plaza, and this is the main entrance, and these windows used to be looked like, like, you know, this different kind of windows, little round at the top. Instead, we will be changing the windows at the front, and we are planning to have a brick look at the front, because that's our theme is, and with a wood facade here, and three bigger windows on the front as well. So this is the exterior change that we have proposed. We also have on the top here, kind of a red stripe, and we may want to make it like a very, not bright, but illuminated if possible, so in the night time, like, you know, it can light up as well.
Yeah, I imagine you expect to sell pizza and ice cream right up to the time you close. So you want people to be able to see the building and identify it as a pizza place and the ice cream place. That's fine. So let me just, you're hoping, you are requesting to have a sign for both the pizza aspect of the business and an additional sign for the ice cream. Is that right?
Yes, correct, sir, yeah.
Okay, now, our code only allows one sign on the building per business. You're making the case that you should have one for each, because even though it's one business, it's too real, you may have people coming in for just ice cream, you're going to have people coming in for just pizza, so that's why you want two signs. I think we understand that, and that's good. Now, we also have a code requirement that trademarks are only supposed to be 50%, but yours, I think, exceeds that. But I imagine your reason for that is because you want to make sure people know it's an ice cream place and it's a pizza place, and the signs themselves are not all that large, it's just that the logos take up a big part of it. I think we get that as well, board members? So, let me ask you, if we can, I know that you've proposed a drive-through.
Yes.
And I understand why you'd like to have that, and I'll first ask Andy here, do we have any information from the town engineer about the viability of that? Or, I didn't see any, yet.
No, actually, I visited the site today with our planning and engineering department.
Okay. So, I don't know if you were able to hear that, I asked Andy Cervagas here about whether the town engineer has looked at that lot, which I'm very familiar with, I happen to use the bank that's there. In fact, they just had an application last month. So all the board members are familiar with that. We previously approved the Benji's Pizza and the Speedy Licious, so we've seen it before. And I think we want to do what we can to help a business thrive in that location. That's a fair statement. But...
Yes, sir.
We have, we have a daycare center on one end of it, and you have a bank that a lot of people go around that building to use the ATM machine and the drive-up teller. So... So.
Yes.
To me, anyway, that's the biggest concern about your application. And it's only a concern because I, I don't have a sense of what it's going to look like and it, that it's going to be safe. So be- because of that, um, that need for further information about the traffic flow and the safety, I uh, am gonna make a motion that we table it so that you can work with the town engineer to demonstrate to us that a drive-through is something that would work here and work safely here. None of us are traffic experts or engineers, so I think we need to get that input uh, from the traffic engineer, but as, as far as the permission to have a restaurant and an ice cream store and the signs, you know, um, I may even make a motion to go ahead with, with those tonight, but um, so tell us a little bit, knowing that uh, that I'm gonna make a motion to table to get information from the traffic engineer, tell us a little bit about why you want the drive-through, how necessary it is for your business and why you think it would be a good thing.
Okay, yeah. And sir, so uh, I can explain you very quickly, so this is not like a regular restaurant drive-through that you would see at McDonald's, Starbucks or any other places. Uh, this is a drive-up pickup, pickup window only. So all our customer order online, they pay online as well. And the uh, the way it works is like, once they place an order, we send them a message that if, once their order is, order is ready, or we tell them like, you know, how long will it take, fifteen minutes, twenty minutes? So they just come by, their order is ready, just to pick up at the drive-up window and we just deliver the order. So we have the same concept in Henrietta and we never see any traffic, we hardly see one or maximum two car in, in the lane because here they are, there is no payment processing happening there. We are not taking any order from the window, it's just they stop by, they just tell their name and we deliver their food, that's all.
So, so do you have, did you have that in Henrietta before COVID?
Yeah, yeah.
You did?
Yes, sir, yeah.
So how does it work? Uh, uh, if, if I pull up to the window and my order's not ready, you just say, go, come back in a couple of minutes or drive around the building, what, what happens?
Yeah, so if, if, in case the order is not ready, we ask them to like, you know, go in the parking lot and wait in the parking lot and we go outside and deliver them, uh, instead of like, you know, asking them to come back in the, at the drive-through. So we just ask them to go wait in the parking lot.
Or, or, or they could park and come in and get their pizza.
Yeah, so they could, they could also do that as well, yep. And uh, so this is a drive-through pickup window, it's not like a regular restaurant drive-through where like, you know, they need to wait in a long lane and take order, nothing like that, it's, it's a very quick operation, uh, uh, it's just pickup window. And another thing I wanna mention, sir, especially after the COVID, uh, we, uh, we, because we had the drive-up window at Henrietta, we were able to like, you know, survive and we did well because most customer like, you know, now ordering online and pick up at, at the drive-up window. Uh, so the, considering like, you know, current situation and, and we don't know like, you know, how, how it will be in the future, uh, we would really appreciate if, if like, you know, we could have a, a drive-up window.
Okay, so if this gets approved tonight, when do you, uh, uh, when do you think you'd be able to open the earliest?
The earliest would be, we are thinking in January.
Okay, all right. I will tell you, there is a, as I'm sure you know, because you've probably done your homework, there is a Salvatores not far from this location down on, on bay and.
Yes.
I don't know if that used to be a bank or what that building, but they have, they had a drive-up window there and they use it very similar to what you're suggesting, that you, you order your stuff and then, excuse me, you can still go in and pick up your order, but.
Yeah.
Uh, you can use that window as well and um.
Yep.
It's, and, and it works, there are times when there are four or five cars, not that I go there every day, I want everyone to understand that. But I frequented enough to be able to say that there are times when there's four or five cars in a row, um, it's, it's a, it's a tight parking lot, but people seem to be handling it pretty well. Uh, so it can happen, I, again, I'll just say, I know I would like information from our traffic engineer and, and that's why I'm, I was gonna make a motion to table it. So I will ask, if any members of the public have a comment on this application, please call three four zero eight seven seven one or submit a comment via penfield.org. And now I'll take a drink of water and I'll ask my fellow board members if they have any questions.
I had, I had a question. Speedy Delicious and Benji's both used, both used to have a takeout window on, I wanna say, the east side of the building. Why couldn't you use that for pickup?
So uh, if, if you um, in the floor plan, I, I don't know how they were managing this, but so they had a counter and then on the east side of the um, uh, like as you mentioned, east side of the building, they had this pickup window. So let's say if my employees are working behind the counter, first like, you know, we wouldn't know if there is somebody like, you know, out there or, or if there is somebody, then we need to come out from the counter with their food and pass the sitting area, then we need to go deliver the food at that window. So uh, we, we looked at that, I don't know how they were operating, but it's just not like, you know, probably the way I, we, we did discuss and then we, we figured like, internally that this is something doesn't work out, that the employee need to leave the counter, take the food, go like, you know, go through the sitting area, go to that window and deliver the food, it just doesn't work operation-wise.
Okay, thank you, I understand.
Mm-hmm, thank you.
Any other questions from the board members? All right, I do not see anybody on the phone waiting to call in. Oh, oh, by the way, I should ask, outdoor dining, do you have a plan to have outdoor dining at all in nice weather?
Ye- ye- yes, sir, yep, yep. So there, there is like, you know, good outside sitting area, uh, which is part of this uh, uh, place. And we will be utilizing that uh, in the summertime, yes.
Okay. Um, so I don't see anybody on the call-in, nor do I see that anyone submitted anything through the website. So um, I'm gonna make a motion to table this application uh, so that we can get the information from our engineer, the applicant can work with our town engineer and advise us on the safest way to have a drive-through if there indeed is a safe way to do it.
I'll second it.
All right, Andres has seconded my motion to table. Any further comment? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so the next meeting is December something, um, and um, we'll see you guys back then. Thank you.
Thank you.
We do have an electronic comment for an application further down the agenda, application, the seventh one, so just don't let me forget that. Thank you.
Ready for the next one?
We are.
David Wilson, ten ninety-nine Plank Road, Webster, New York, one four five eight O. Requests area variances under section two fifty dash fourteen point three of the code to allow a taller accessory storage building than permitted under section two fifty dash five point one dash F twelve C of the code with greater area than permitted under section two fifty dash two point two and section two fifty dash five point one dash F twelve A of the code at ten ninety-nine Plank Road. The property is currently or formerly owned by David Wilson and is owned RR dash one, SPL number zero nine four point zero four dash one dash three nine point one zero two. This is application number twenty Z dash zero zero four one.
Okay, applicant.
Can you guys hear me?
We can hear you, go ahead and give us your name and address and proceed with your presentation.
Sure thing, uh, my name's Dave Wilson of ten ninety-nine Plank Road and I think, uh, thank you, Andy, for pulling it up. I wanna first say thank you for making this possible tonight through Zoom, I think you guys are doing an admirable job making this work remotely, so thank you for that. Um, I'm uh, I'm coming to you guys for approval of putting up a um, steel structure pole barn uh, on the east side of the property, uh, which you can currently see on the map is a, a field. Um, it'll be in that space, I think, Andy, I provided uh, kind of a drawn-in square of uh, of where I plan to put it. Uh, it would be a fifty by seventy-five foot um, steel structure that uh, would have that and also ten-foot eaves on either side. Yeah, thank you, Andy, for pulling that up, that's roughly where I would put it. Uh, and it would be used for storage, a workshop, uh, storage of a boat, a couple of boats, jet skis, uh, I have uh, classic cars, couple of classic cars uh, that would use in there. Um, I have a hobby of uh, of restoring classic cars, so I would like to also have it, uh, install a lift to be able to work on those cars inside the building. Um, and so I believe that the request is because the structure would be larger than one percent of my lot as well as taller. And uh, I have had conversations with my neighbors, uh, Mike, who's to the south of me, has a nice, large red barn and he's gracious enough to store one of my cars this uh, this winter for me. Uh, we also had a neighbor who stopped by that's on the north side of Plank Road asking some questions and we talked to her, she was very nice and supportive of us putting the structure up. Uh, there is, you know, several barns around this location, as I said, to the south, uh, my neighbor has two pole barn structures. Uh, Schutz is down the road, obviously has several pole, pole structures. Uh, and then to the northeast of me, the uh, previous turkey farm has several uh, you know, pole structures and farms. So, you know, from a aesthetics perspective, you know, I think I'm keeping in line with those structures that are around me, I don't think we're making a material change to the structures of the aesthetics of the area. And uh, with that, I'll open it up to questions that I can uh, answer for you guys.
Sure, and, and before we ask um, questions, I'd like to remind the public that they can call with comments or questions at three four zero eight seven seven one or submit them through penfield.org. Thank you, I'm sorry.
No, that's fine, that's fine. Um, approximately how large is your property, your actual parcel?
Uh, I believe it's uh, just under four acres, I think it was three point seven two, I think, Andy, when I talked to him, uh, but I think that takes into account the right-ofways that are on the, on the north and east side of the property that aren't considered really mine because of the right-ofways. Um, so I think it's a little bit bigger than that.
Okay, I, I mean, part of the reason I ask is, you know, in terms of the size of your lot, you know, when I look at a, a pole barn in terms, you look at the town code and what's, you know, typically seen, um, the size that you're looking at is something you would see on that, you know, eight, nine, ten acres plus type lots. And I guess I'm just, in terms of, you know, scale-wise, um, it seems large for this parcel, so I guess, you know, give me a little more insight into um, why a fifty by seventy-five and then plus it sounded like you said something about ten-foot lean-to's on the side, are those, is that additional storage or are we really looking at a seventy by seventy-five? I guess I'm, I'm, I was a little confused by the lean-to's in your application letter.
Yeah, in the structure, uh, thank you for pulling it up, the, the roof line would come down and so, you know, from a square footage perspective, yes, but those lean-to's are, are open air. Um, and so, you know, that would be for, you know, I guess to answer your, your question on why so large, the, the thought process is, is that um, this is, those are the amount of vehicles I have now and the structure and to do work and have a shop in there and, and potentially a paint booth to, to paint the cars, so all of a sudden you start to eat up a fair amount of space to do that. Um, so that's why I figured in, in building a structure, I might as well build for uh, what I may need now and into the future, uh, so that I'm not adding on to it as I, as I grow, um, as I add more vehicles, as I, my hobby expands. Um, so, you know, the, the, the point is, is if I'm building a structure, I should build the one that I, I plan to be here forever. So um, that's, that's the reason why I was going to that size, uh, that's the best answer that I have.
No, no, I, I totally appreciate that. And, and you know, when our zoning board looks at things, we always look for what's the minimum variance to grants, because you know, as I was going back, you know, the, the size of structure you have, when you look at the town code, is really aiming for that's much larger um, parcels that would allow something, because when they say one percent of your square footage of your lot, um, you know, that, that puts you at one size. And then the next piece of, of the variance is that um, a secondary structure such as this shouldn't be larger than your home. Um, and so the primary residence is actually smaller than this proposed structure, and so that's actually another uh, variance that you're looking for as well tonight um, for that. So that's kind of that, that, that piece where we're, where we're trying to say, okay, what fits into this lot, what fits into the character of the neighborhood? Um, while, while it is RR one, that's kind of that transitional zone between residential and ag where you kind of move across, so it's, you know, it is seen where you see barns. And so I guess I'm, I'm just trying to get a little more handle on, you know, what are you trying to put in there that really, you know, takes something this large? Because I don't know if I've ever seen a request for a barn on anyone's residential property yet this large. This, this, this is probably the largest one I've seen in all the years that I've, I've been doing it, so it's, it's pretty big. Um, and a lot of times the lots are bigger.
That's true, it's a fair size, with that being said, I mean, right behind my house is a very large barn, uh, larger than this.
Is, is it larger than this one?
Yeah, it definitely, it definitely is larger than it.
Okay, I was, I was, I was trying to scale on the map.
It's definitely larger than this, uh, it's longer, it's wider, it's got a separate structure off the back of it. Um, it's a, that's a very large barn and then he also, you know, Mike has a twenty by twenty barn that's structured where the boat is further south on this picture. Um, so yeah, I, I think that that, that barn will be, uh, that barn there is larger than what I'm proposing.
And Andy, can you pull the cursor up to the, the, that, you're saying that that is larger than what you're proposing?
Yeah.
And you seem pretty confident in that, I'm not questioning it, but um, you know, I, I actually asked Andy to check this out a little bit today, um, because I, I looked at the Google and I said, oh, he's gonna reference the property to the south, which I would too if I were you.
But. And I did the same thing, because I looked and I said, it looks like your home, when I look at the aerial map, your home's footprint looks larger than this one, that's why I said, okay, if this is lar-, if this is larger than the home, is that, is that a true representation then? That's, that's kind of what I was, that's kind of where I was going at, so I appreciate you bringing that up.
Yeah, so I, I, I haven't taken a, a measuring stick out to, to Mike's barn, Mike is my, my neighbor, my neighbor to the south, but I have paced it out. Um, and I believe it's about a hundred foot long uh, by about seventy-five feet wide uh, when I paced it out, uh, you know, roughly, and as I paced it out. Uh, and, and so that's where I say that it, you know, it's, it is larger than what I'm.
Any idea how long it's been there?
Oh, I, I don't know that, it's been there for as long as I've been here. Um, it's a, you know, it's a multi-story barn too, there's the foundational basement, then the main structure and then there's a, a, a top structure to it as well. I can only imagine it was part of the original, you know, agricultural, um, you know, farmhouse barn, because it's not a, it's not modern. Um, he, he recently painted it about, were four or five years ago, uh, but it's not a recent.
It's probably been there longer than the code. I, I mean, in fact, I'm almost sure of that.
Yeah, tax record says nineteen hundred approximately is when it was built.
Yeah, so in other words, when that was built, there, this restriction didn't exist.
Sure, yeah, and it's understandable, I recognize that.
And there probably wasn't surrounding houses around it either.
Yeah.
Yeah, to be fair, for the houses that surround, yeah, I mean, to the north, obviously, um, you know, I imagine that to the northeast where the turkey farm is, he's got some big structures over there too. There's a larger barn to the south, uh, where um, um, what's, um, what, Michelle and John Gibbs live, they have a barn structure, uh, the big house that they put up with the fence all around it, they've got a big barn that's over there. So, you know, and then obviously Schutz had, have their barns as well.
Can you dive back in a little bit about the things you were gonna store in there? You said, you know, you had multiple cars, hobby, I mean, are we talking two, three, fifteen, twenty? Are we selling cars?
Yeah, so I have, um, I have uh, two vehicles now, a nineteen seventy-four Javelin, uh, that's my dad's, I've restored, it's mine, uh, my wife this summer bought a um, sixty-eight Ford F two fifty that we're restoring, um, I've got, um, and I have plans to continue to go down that, I've got two boats, uh, jet skis, uh, I've got a tractor uh, that I use on the property. I plan to put a paint booth in to paint and restore the cars, a machine shop to work on the, the stuff that's in there, you know, there, it's, it's a hobby. Right now I'm doing all that out of my garage, uh, so the garage is getting relatively full as you can imagine. Um, and uh, you know, the vehicles will come out into the driveway when I need space, but that can be difficult to do in the winter.
Sure, and now, I guess I'm still struggling a bit with size-wise, you know, you're, you're talking about doing this right now out of your. You're talking about doing this right now out of your garage, so I'll assume, in an average garage, you've got...
Actually, it's a two-bay garage on the west side of the house. So the two on the north side, if you look in where the vehicle's parked there now, there's a bay there. Yep, and then there's another one to the, just north of that vehicle that's parked there. So that is a two-car garage that's there currently. So one bay I'm being used for working on the vehicles, and the other side is where I have storing my drivers.
Sure, sure. And I guess now, also, think about placement. It was kind of a hand-drawn drawing on the map. How far from the road are you thinking about placing this? Is there any opportunities for vegetative buffering, things like that, tree hide row?
Absolutely. Yep, that's a great question. So I drew this into the field location. There's a very pronounced embankment to the north that have ash trees on them. If you could pull that up, I appreciate. So it's in the north. There's the embankment there. I gotta move this. My video is up here, so I can't really see. Give me a second. So those trees, and then there's locust trees to the east that are full. And then, yes, I mean, I could absolutely plan to put bushes and things in this field. This spring, I planted wildflowers into this field, so it was fully tilled up and wildflowers were planted and grass. Most of the time, this field has been raggedy. So one of the projects I had when COVID hit was to mow, bush hog the entire field, till the entire field, plant wildflowers in the field. So obviously, the field outside of the structure itself will have the wildflowers around it. And yeah, I mean, if there's any other vegetation that I need to put up. But those trees, those locust trees on the east get very full. The ash trees to the north are healthy specimens as well.
Okay. So let's say, we go through tonight, we don't find enough justification to say yes to 50 by 75 foot pole barn. How small of a pole barn could you get by? Like I look at two things. There's that one criteria that we're looking at is, your home is about 34,888 square feet. Right there, that's one of those requirements that if we can get below that, that's one of the variances that now all of a sudden we don't have to grant where we're looking at saying, okay, we're minimizing sizes and things like that, and there's one less variance that we had to grant for this property. You know, would a barn closer to that 3,000 or 3,200 or something like that work to meet your needs right now? And I guess that's kind of where we're looking at, what can you use to get by with for this? So that way, it's a lot.
So to answer, the house is 34 in square foot, to your point, 50 by 75 is 3,700 square foot, right? So are you asking me about a 300 square foot difference?
Well, you're right now proposing one that's larger. So we're looking at, can we get something to remove one of the variances?
I tried to drive clarity to the question. So the enclosed space is 50 by 75. Is that where you're at? 50 by 75 is 3,750 square foot?
No, you gotta add the lean-to's. Add the lean-to's to that. This application, we're considering this application to be for a 5,250 square foot building.
Is that because the lean-to's are covered space because the lean-to's aren't enclosed?
Well, it's the force base of the structure. So yeah, I mean, it has a roof over it, so we include that in the...
It's like a carport.
I'm just trying to be clarified. I'm not trying to be confrontational. I'm just trying to understand the question.
The answer is yes. The answer is yes. So again, from our perspective, you're asking for a 5,250 square foot building on both of your variance requests compared it to the 3,500 square foot house and also as a percentage of your total lot size. So in follow-up to Andres's question, I guess I'd ask it the same question, maybe in a different way. And that is, everything that you're doing now in terms of your work in restoring the cars and in storing them, either with your neighbor to the south or other places, would you continue? I assume you're going to continue those things if this is denied. So if you want to continue in those activities, but now you have a 3,000 square foot barn, maybe you don't have to store stuff in your neighbors or elsewhere. And maybe you don't have to do all the work in your residential garage. You can do it there. So you gotta try to help us with, we're obviously struggling with the extreme size of the variance request because it is. And maybe it is, that's a little clearer to you now that we've mentioned that it's 5,200 square feet, 5,250. But it is, both in percentage-wise of your whole lot and in square foot-wise, this is a really big variance request. And I don't recall, we probably did, but I don't recall ever granting an application for a barn that's bigger than the house.
No.
Many exist, and you've pointed some out, but they've been around for hundreds of years. So I don't, it's not that this building in and of itself is going to look bad in that particular area too much, except we're in 2020 now, and we have a code that didn't exist in 1900 or 1940 or probably 1950, but it does now. And while I appreciate the neighborhood with Barry's Turkey Farm and your neighbor to the south and the cider mill down the road, I get all that. But because you enjoy your hobbies and you're entitled to do so, to grant that size of a variance when you do have alternatives for your hobbies because you're doing it now.
Yeah, I think that's, I understand the request. I think that to say that I have alternatives are, you know, those alternatives are based upon the goodwill of some of my neighbors to work that out. You know, I don't think that's a sustainable thing. I'm not sure that I can guarantee that that's going to be the case. You know, and I think that, I understand the request about, hey, what's the size that you could get to? I also want to recognize that when you're trying to move vehicles around in a structure to be able to work on them, to just only have the space that allows you to have those vehicles stacked up next to each other doesn't necessarily work either. You know, from a lean-to perspective, the idea of putting the lean-to's on was that when the boat comes out of the water, rather than having to put it inside the structure, I can stick in the lean-to. If the tractor can be parked in the lean-to, it kept out of the rain during the seasons that I can use it. You know, that's the reason that I added them on to the structure, not that they would be filled to the brim at all times throughout the season. So I guess I understand where you're going, but I also struggle with the, I have a solution because that solution was only because I couldn't get the structure when I went for the building permit and I had vehicles around that I had to work on. So if the request is to say, Dave, what can you do to get closer to it? Then I can make a statement that says I could drop the lean-to's. That would get closer to the size that you guys are looking for. It's 3,750 at that point. That's just more or less an impact to my flexibility in the space. It does not make or break it for me by any means to remove the lean-to's.
All right. So let me ask another question similar. If we were to approve a 3,000 square foot building today, with or without the lean-to's, but 3,000 square foot, are you going to build it or are you going to find alternatives? You don't have to answer if you don't want to, by the way.
Well, I think, I want to process through that. Is it Dan or Daniel?
I've been called a lot of things. Either of those are acceptable.
If you're mad at limits, Daniel.
I appreciate the question. I'd have to process through it, to be honest. You know, I think from my, I'd have to think through it to understand it. I have designed the layout inside the barn for how I'll be able to move things around. So I'd have to understand that. But for me, if it's to be in alignment with the size of the house, then if that's the major tripping hazard in the discussion, then I can take that back and reevaluate that.
All right. Well, that's certainly fair enough. I think we get, and by the way, everybody on this board totally respectful of what you do. Nice property, nice house. None of that is an issue, what you want to do. It's just a matter of, we have a code and we have a request for variances from that code, and they're pretty darn substantial. So we do have a comment, a phone call, caller waiting. But anything else from the board at this point, anyway? We may have some more after that. Go ahead, Mike.
I'd like to say something that really hasn't been approached here. You can start comparing structures in the neighborhood, but we have to take into account that this is a corner lot that's wide open. Visually, a bigger structure is going to have more of an impact on this lot that's going to be on the neighbor to the south or neighbor to the east, for that matter. There's no buffering. It's a wide-open, flat lot on the corner.
Yep, that's true.
So Mike, I appreciate that. So help me understand buffering because to the north, there is a pretty tall embankment where the trees are installed on that raises up. I would say it's at least a six-foot grade, if not higher, of an embankment. And Barry's Turkey Farm to the northeast of me is also on a corner lot, and they have several smaller structures in the back.
They do. But again, they have been there for years. But that is a true statement.
There's a lot of growth back there. There's not a lot of growth here.
Okay, I think we have, let's take the caller. We have a phone call from Stephen Cushman who lists 1152 and 1154 Plank Road as the address. But let's hear from Mr. Cushman on the phone. Do I have to click on anything?
I don't think so. He's across the street to the north.
Okay.
Hello, hello?
Is that Mr. Cushman?
This is Mr. Cushman here.
Go right ahead, Mr. Cushman.
Okay, thanks. Just in the way of background information, you did describe my location as properly. My wife and I live at 1152 and 1154, and we are directly across the road from this proposed building. By way of background information, I moved to Penfield way back in 1953, Halloween of 53. So I am on Creek Street, and I am familiar with this property. In fact, the owner's house here, it was initially a storage shed and way back in the days when we had the mafia wars going on in Rochester, Monroe County sheriffs used to hang out in that storage shed and spy on Sammy Giugello and Lupo from across the street. So anyways, the barns, the existing barns have been there for a long time. Schutz Cider Mill is a farm. Farms have got exclusive rights to do many things, thus they can burn trees and cause hazardous smoke in the neighborhood, things of that nature. But these things are old and existing. We're in an area now where there's a multimillion-dollar house just a few feet down the road on Jackson. We've had new houses being built on the properties directly to the west. They're in a $500,000-plus price range. This is a residential neighborhood. A 5,200 square foot building on a lot is just way too much. The height, I haven't heard any discussion on how tall it is, but it does exceed the height. So I think we're up to like a three-story building here. It's a monster of a building. You're on a very busy intersection. Just today alone, we had four emergency vehicles pass through this intersection, and I think we're dealing with some issues of public safety in here. Several years back, there was an accident where a waste management truck smashed into a car and ended up in the owner's property there, and she was dead. But so it is important to have this area open. Now, if there is a desire for him to build something, I would recommend that if he wants a freestanding barn, to put it directly behind his house and on the way to Jerome Stumpf's old barn, the existing barn that might be 100 feet long. The other alternative I could see is that to blend in with the neighborhood, he should attach a garage to his existing building, his existing residence. If you go further down the road on Plank Road, you come to a drive called Stable Gate, and you'll find a beautiful house on the corner that has a 10-car garage attached to it. Now, evidently, that guy has an interest in hobby with cars, so that he has such a large garage. Perhaps we should have a garage coming out of the house that blends in with the same type of material because we're talking about a prefabricated mobile home type of structure being set and placed there. Steel frames being dropped down on some sort of pad. That in addition, if you read in his cover letter, he is looking to install water, septic, and heat. So are we talking about having Jacuzzis or swimming pools inside of this monster building? I don't know. It's not coming out. It's not being discussed here tonight. But it is on your cover letter for the proposal, for something down the road. So it's just way too big of a thing. The existing trees do not camouflage it well. I think if anything, you would have to have some sort of evergreens. He's got evergreens around his house. Something like that would look good, and ultimately, they would grow up and fill it in. But if he needs bathroom facilities and water, use the existing house. Come out of his driveway and just build to the south as some sort of garage that again blends in with his existing ranch-style house. So that's pretty much my opinion. I'm strongly opposed to it, and I'd be very disappointed to see an approval given for a monster building situated on that land, which they did seed this past summer for wildflowers.
Okay. Any board members have any questions for Mr. Cushman? No? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Cushman, for your input. You can certainly stay and listen, and we appreciate your comments. The comments that Mr. Cushman made about the septic and electric and water, they are in your application. You've said you may do that, and I assume you would do that just so you can stay and continue to work in that building without having to run back to the house or outside to do whatever you have to do.
I have no plans to put pools or Jacuzzis inside the building. My point to that was, you're right, I'll be working in there likely during colder months. And to have water and septic in the future, in the future, not as part of the build, was because if I'm working in there and I need to use the bathroom in the cold or in the building, I'd rather the building be able to be warm and to be able to use the facilities if needed. But by no means is it planned to be for pools or Jacuzzis.
So...
Okay, just one other thing regarding the septic tank situation. He is sitting upon stones right there where the proposed lot is. I do not believe that land would meet the perk test, just like Barry's Turkey Farm did meet the perk test for the proposed Penfield Central School garage. So he has that problem to deal with.
Yeah, and the Department of Health wouldn't approve it unless it passed the appropriate test.
And I recognize that I'd have to apply for a permit and perk test and do those types of things at that time.
So why don't we address the issue of the location? Mr. Cushman's made some points about, hey, can you move it, add on to your house and/or move the outbuilding closer to the house, perhaps even between your house and your neighbor's barn that you've referenced, the one to the south?
Yeah, I understand the request. That part of my property is used for all the kids to play. That's the primary use for that square footage that he's talking about. You can actually see, this picture is dated. That was where the playground was that the kids played on for a while. That's the primary use for gatherings and social and kids playing back there. Ideally, the use of the space that I'm calling out is, at this point, just wildflower space. So ideally, the placement was there to use the space inside of the property that I own. And into the future, recognizing that I have to get a permit for this, the idea was to be able to come off of Jackson Road for vehicles, the boat, the things of that nature, rather than having to come off Plank Road. Plank Road is a very busy road, as my neighbor outlined. It's got a heavy amount of traffic that comes up and down that road, east to west. Jackson's a much safer road to be pulling in vehicles and access. So the idea was, in the future, after the structure's up, if I wanted to put a... the structure's up, if I wanted to put a driveway in, and, and Andy was nice enough to explain to me that I would have to apply for a county permit to cut the curb to do that, uh, but that would be why I placed it in that location.
Okay. Um, do we have any other questions from the board? I guess I'd be more-
So, can we, Dan, can we talk about height for a second? Because I believe-
Yeah, that's a good point. I mean, it's, it's, uh, relatively speaking, it's a minor variance request compared to the, your other ones. Yeah, go ahead.
For our purposes of clarity, though, it's the only reason for the height was so that I could put a lift in there to lift the cars up. It is not a three-story building. It's not a huge, tall barn, multi-story by any means.
Twenty, twenty-two and a quarter feet high is what you're asking for now. And the code allows 20. So, that's why, you know, it's, it's slightly over two feet higher than what code allows. So, it's not any three-story. Okay.
And I, and I believe, to be, to be fair, I, I'm not, you know, if it's 20 or 22, I think that's just the structure from the, the right roof angle for, for this construction of the building.
Yeah.
I didn't say that it needed to be 22. It was in order to make the 10-foot entrances on the side so that I could pull taller vehicles in.
So, Mr. Wilson, you've talked about having to mull things over a little bit here. I think you've been inundated maybe with concerns and comments that, uh, frankly, it doesn't look, um, too hopeful for your current application. So, um, I'm, I'm assuming we'd be willing to give you a month to our next meeting for you to, uh, maybe have some further thoughts, uh, even feel free to come in and speak with folks at the town, um, and see if there's an, an appli, an application, you can come up with a modification that would bring you closer in line with the code. You, you don't have to do that. You may say, Dan, I want you guys to vote tonight, and, uh, I, I'm prepared to vote tonight. But, I'm also willing to give you time to think this over. Um, I assume you wouldn't start construction on this anytime soon, anyway. But, again, I'll leave it up to you, and I know you're lead on it.
I was gonna say, I was gonna say exactly the same thing. So, I was gonna say, if you want to, you know, I know one of the things we, we spoke about was that, um, you know, the difference between how much greater it was than, than, than the primary residence. If we can get it down, you know, below the primary residence square footage, that's one less variance that we have to consider at all. Um, but I know you said you needed some time to recalculate how that would work out. So, I was gonna recommend or ask if that'd be something you'd be open to wanting us to, uh, table this.
Right.
Yeah, so Andres, I, I absolutely appreciate the questions and the comments and, and taking the time to think about it. Um, I can, I can take that back. You know, I do appreciate the offer to talk to some of you guys. Um, you know, I'm, this is the first time I've ever applied for a variance, uh, by any means. So, you know, making sure that I'm doing, uh, it appropriately and in alignment with your guys' guidance. And so, if there is an opportunity to discuss that in more detail, uh, then I appreciate that offer. And yeah, I, I'm open to having it table, just understand who I need to talk to-
Right.
-as we work through that, um, as I recalibrate how I could make things different, things work. Um, and, you know, if you guys could let me know, is that you that I should discuss it with so that-
I, I, I-
-we set ourselves up for success in a discussion in December.
To interrupt you, I'd say call Andy, and Andy can point you to other people here that you should sit down with. And, um, you know, probably wouldn't hurt to talk to Mr. Cushman, but I'm not gonna force, twist anybody's arm in that way.
I'm happy to talk to Mr. Cushman.
Great. And hopefully, he's happy to talk to you. So, I think, uh-
I was gonna make a motion to table this.
And I'll second that. So, we have a motion by Andres, um, to, uh, table this motion for further consideration by the applicant. Uh, and, um, we just got something, another call, and, but it's on, that's on the next one. So, um, to give the applicant further time to, uh, mull over his application, speak with neighbors potentially and folks at the town, uh, about how the application could be, could be modified. And, uh, we have a motion to table in a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Hi.
Well, thank you very much, Mr. Wilson. I know this wasn't easy for you, and, uh, you know, no predictions as to what's gonna happen next month, but, uh, it's obvious you appreciate our circumstance and our perspective, and we appreciate yours as well, and Mr. Cushman's. So-
Thank you.
Happy Thanksgiving. Thank you.
Thanksgiving you too.
Everybody okay? Hey, Mike, you need a break?
No, I'm fine.
Really? I could stay at home and get that. Um, man, oh, man. Okay, next application.
Albert and Lori Bracolo, 2755 Penfield Road, Fairport, New York, 145, 14450. Request approval for a conditional use under Section 250-13.3 and Section 250-5.1-E1K of the Code to allow the use of an existing barn as an events venue at 2755 Penfield Road. The property is currently or formerly owned by Bracolo Property Management, LLC, and is Zoned RA-2, SBL number 141.01-1-17.1. This is application number 20Z-0042.
Okay. Hi, folks. If you can introduce yourselves, names and address, and then go ahead with your presentation.
Lori Bracolo.
I'm Al Bracolo. How you guys doing?
Good. Doing okay.
It's 2755 Penfield Road.
Okay. Tell us, uh, what you'd like to do with the property and, uh, give us your support for, uh, the application.
So, um, in my letter, I was commenting about the fact that we do a few workshops, um, and we want to expand that and promote doing a lot more tourism, as in agritourism and environmental, um, tours. We have been entertaining some of the students in different, um, classes, Penfield and, uh, Rochester Landscape Technicians, Norman Howard School, and several of those kind of programs. So, we really wanted to make this a lot more of, of, of focus, because we have something to offer to the community. And, um, we see a niche, especially because of COVID now, people looking for more outdoor venues, um, the barn being very open and airy, and it will accommodate easily, um, presentations or like corporate retreats and things like that. So, that, that's what our goal is right now.
Okay. So, just to be quite clear, uh, well, first of all, let me, uh, remind folks that they can call with comments 340-8771, or submit comments through the penfield.org website. We actually do have somebody on hold that wants a comment. We will get to that. Um, but just to be clear, the barn's already there, and it's already being used. What's it being used for now?
So, right now, it's been used, the upper barn is used for, um, kind of craft and workshops, things like that, doing, uh, plantings and some demonstrations. And the lower barn is used for storage and also for some of the horticultural plantings for the farm nursery.
Okay. So, in your letter of intent here, you'd say that you want to allow the barn at the garden center to become a seasonal space. So, what, what barn are you talking about? You, you mentioned two. Which one are you talking about that's a subject of the application?
So, it's one barn, but the barn has upper and lower.
Yeah, it's the bright white roof. It, that's the 1900 barn.
So, upper and lower is, refers to floors?
Yeah, it's the two floors of that barn. Like, it's an old dairy barn. So, the bottom's a, a concrete, you know, and stone structure-
Okay.
And the wooden barn is built on top. It's just old 1900-style barn.
Great. And also, in your letter, you referenced that you, you would like to, uh, use it to become a seasonal event space for agritourism, right?
Yes, so-
And that's your only intention, to use it for, for that purpose?
It would be used for any community type of event that inquires. Um, it will be, the goal is between May and September. It's, it's not heated. It's not air-conditioned. Um, we have a fan. Um, but also, we closed the garden center Thanksgiving completely. So, we are closed for a good four months of the year to begin with. And, um, most of the types of tours, things like that typically would happen more in June. That's when, um, we've worked with most of the schools. And, um, summer is definitely the highlight for, um, getting out of your corporate event or charitable events, for example, like school Holy Childhood, we posted there before, um, those kind of programming. And the, the main tie-in for me personally is the environment, that the whole goal of the garden center and our business is to help community, uh, people to learn and understand the environment, what they can do for, um, pollinator plants and to reduce their carbon footprint, no-mow zones and et cetera. So, we've been slowly, over the past few years, creating these gardens and demonstration areas throughout the property that we can do tours of. What we wanna do is expand and have a formal presentation area inside the barn, and then still continue to do those tours.
Okay. So, you, and I'm sorry if I'm being redundant, but I just wanna be clear. You, you envision that any event that you would hold there would have the connection to the agriculture.
Yeah, it's going to, yes.
Yeah. So, how about-
That's the point.
How about private weddings or private social parties?
It, it, no. I mean, that's not really a main, that's not a goal, is to have weddings there. I'm not looking for that.
If anybody's going to have any kinds of smaller, um, um, private kinds of parties, it's still going to be very focused on the, um, experiential and the agricultural and the horticultural, um, environmental theme.
Yeah. When, when I saw this letter of intent, I thought it's, it's not agriculture, but it's art. The Artisan Works Building over on, I think it's on Blossom.
Lou's, Lou-
Yes.
Lou's building, yeah.
Exactly. And-
Yeah.
I've gone there for charity events. I've gone, I've actually gone there for a wedding. And it's, you know, it's a, it's a beautiful atmosphere in the sense you're, you're having a celebration, a nice celebration, but there's art all around you. So, I guess I envision an event here that with, with agriculture all around.
Right, flowers all around.
We have company parties at Artisan Works because our employees, um, you know, they wanna go see something different other than plants.
Well, then you know exactly what I'm talking about. Yeah. All right. So, have you, have you, we've had a couple emails, uh, submitted from folks prior to, uh, the meeting today. Have you seen those?
Yes. Um, and specifically, the one, uh, across the street would be the closest. Both of them were concerned about traffic.
Yeah.
The, um, the one across the street, certainly there's gonna be traffic, as there already is going into the garden center. But, I wanna make it really clear that the, the application is for under 100 people. So, say we had, um, you know, up to 99 people. Right now, because of COVID, we're looking at 30.
Yeah.
Um, but that would be the, the largest capacity, would be up to 99, and therefore maybe 50 cars, and we have plenty of parking lot, and absolutely no way would anybody, um, be allowed to, or even consider parking across the street, um, or on Jomanda Way. So, that I definitely wanna make sure is not an issue. We do have, um, concerns even from our next-door neighbors, the O'Learys, who used to own the farm, about noise. And noise and all that kind of pollution is, again, something that's really important to us. We're here to do, to connect with nature. We're not gonna have blaring music, but I can tell you that we had a wonderful band at our, um, 30th anniversary, and it was just, uh, two solo singers with guitars out on the balcony, and it was just absolutely heavenly. And, um, I don't think anybody could hear it outside.
And it was daytime.
Yeah. But, so, um, that went really well. And then, the other neighbor is down to the east of us, and I would love to get a lot of people coming from the east to our garden center and that. But, most of the types of events and programming that we have and the demographics that we have do not even go past our garden center towards the east at all. So, I know that that particular concern with the neighbor really is, um, is a non-issue. Um, and there's certainly not gonna be lots of nights and parties. The goal is daytime, weekdays. We wanna keep this into a very structured business atmosphere.
All right. So, so, I, I appreciate that, and I'm, I am looking at the email from the Martins who live on, uh, Jomanda Way.
Yeah.
Um, they, they, you've covered a lot of their, their questions and concerns. They ask about overflow parking. You've said there's not gonna be a need for, you have plenty of parking as it is, so, and, and you will make sure people know that they cannot park on Jomanda, they shouldn't park on Jomanda in order to attend an event. Does that happen now, by the way, with the garden center? Does anybody, any of your garden center customers park on Jomanda that you know?
No.
Okay.
No.
That would be dangerous.
Yeah, the, um, the Martins also ask about hours of operation. So, like specifically, when will the events shut down? Um, so I'd like to hear, uh, from you about that. Also, music, you've already mentioned music, but, um, whatever music you have will be within the town's, uh, noise ordinance, right? I'm sure you're willing to, for that to be a condition.
Absolutely.
Uh, and, um, will liquor be served? And if so, how will it be controlled?
So, right now, uh, first of all, we're not serving any liquor at all. And, um, we met with the Ag and Markets, um, inspector to discuss some of those kinds of things, um, as far as whether or not people can bring in their own wine or beer, um, which is fine. And, but again, if there was any catering, it would have to be with a licensed bartender. When we had the Rotary Club there, they had Joey's Restaurant, and they had wine also served that night for the Rotary Dinner. The dinner ended by 7:30, 8 o'clock. As you can probably see right now, this is already past my bedtime.
And it was my Rotary Club. It wasn't like-
Okay.
So, um, anyway, the goal is, the events that we would have, I have, uh, a few ladies from the Women Presidents Organization are gonna be popping over. Unfortunately, because of COVID, we're not having, you know what I would like to add as a party. But, we're always done by 7 o'clock. I just-
Okay. So, uh, just so I'm clear on the alcohol, you do not intend to serve it or sell it. People will, will, will be allowed to bring it in as permitted by law, by the state. Um, and-
Strictly.
And, and, and the, the barn will be shut down at, at what time? The, the latest? Did you say 7?
I, I would say 8 o'clock it would be shut down.
Okay. And also-
Probably that's gonna be his latest pop.
All right. So, let's say 8 o'clock.
I could ever see anything happen.
Let's say 8 o'clock, and then the months you would operate would be May 1st through September 30? Or do you wanna go all the way to Thanksgiving?
No, not Thanksgiving, but maybe to Halloween.
Halloween? Okay. Um, all right. Well, I may have some more, but at the moment, uh, I need to catch my breath. Any other questions from the, uh, board members?
I think you covered them all. You did pretty good.
Uh, so we have two, uh, phone calls, two folks waiting. The first one, well, um, yeah, the first one is, uh, the names John and Amy, uh, Massaluso, 2783 Penfield Road. Um, so let's, uh, let's hear from them.
Uh, this is Amy, and, um, I'm, she's on the way over, um, driveway, I'm watching that. Um, I'm putting here to-
I'm, I'm sorry, I'm gonna have to interrupt you because we can't, we can't hear you at all. Uh, the board members can't hear, and the applicants can't hear.
Can you hear us now?
Oh, yes. Jeez.
Okay. Yeah, okay. Hi, this is Amy, and, um, we're at 2783 Penfield Road. Our driveway is two driveways past yours, and we're the house in the back. So, we catch all the noise from your garden. Not saying that it's not a beautiful spot. Um, I've been there. I've bought from you, you know. I do appreciate it and like it. But, again, you know, I've been here 35 years. It is kinda noisy over there, you know. I would like to be able to sit outside and listen to the birds in the silence, 'cause we work all week. And living here, we- and listen to the birds in the silence, because we work all week. And living here, we really don't get that. We get a lot of noise from your place, from your machines.
Oh, the machines, okay.
Yeah.
During the daytime.
And that's the construction machines, the trucks that are going in and out, and we require that they're in by 5 o'clock. We do not want any of that kind, we won't be getting any deliveries. So I think, you know, that might be what you're hearing during the day, during the regular Monday through Friday.
Yeah, it's constantly the one truck that beeps. But, okay, anyway, to go forward. Over the years, you know, the, they wanted to put in, the last one was the tubing that we went to the town for. And that would have been quite the large place, and that did not go through. Because we have a lot of traffic on this road. They also wanted near to Jomanda Way to put another lane, the turn in to where you are, Brockola, and maybe possibly even a light, because the traffic was so heavy there. So, you know, that's something to consider. And, you know, we already have a hard time getting out of our driveway, but I don't want to complain as a neighbor. This is the country, that's why we've been here all these years. And it just, you know, over the years, the noise out this way, it definitely is getting worse. It's more, it's feeling every day more residential.
Hey, Amy, I don't know if you realize, my husband and I both lived there. We actually lived on the property there for two years, and then we bought a farmhouse down the road just a year and a half ago. So we lived right on the property, and I agree about some of the traffic noise. It's primarily those large trucks into here.
The rumble strip.
That rumble strip is awful. But what I loved about that is the place, being in the woods, it was so quiet, and we could hear the owls and all the other insects, and it was just a slice of heaven. And right now, at still my respite, when I'm working there, I go for a walk in the woods that we've cut these trails, because, just like you, I do need to get away from everything, always.
Well, see, I don't get that, because I never walk in the woods, because out this way, there's hunting. I don't care for hunting. I don't care for guns. I don't, you know, and things, so I say out of the woods. That could be a problem when it's hunting season. I don't know if you're going to plan to have that up until November.
No.
But, you know, there's still many issues, like living on this road, and the biggest one, basically, would be the traffic and some of the noise, you know. So, you said you're not going to have this go on the weekend, right?
We won't be, we don't have trucks and construction and all of that on the weekends. We're open during, on the weekends, anyway. And we're open during, during May, June, and July, right up to about 7 o'clock at night, as it is. So that's, those hours aren't going to be changing. But as far as the traffic, I have to agree with you about the traffic, and I would love to see if we could get the traffic to slow down, because it does go too fast there. But I know that there's not a whole lot we can do about that. That is definitely a lot more traffic from all of the growth out towards the east area, Wayne County. And I don't see our garden center actually bringing in that much more traffic. I just, I don't see it possibly happening.
I think she was also, I think one of the things that the caller was asking about is events on the weekend. I think you've said that you would, if granted permission, you would have events on the weekend, but not past 8 o'clock.
Absolutely not.
Correct.
Not past 8 o'clock, no.
But yes, on the weekend.
There might be something on a Saturday.
Okay.
I don't see anything happening on Sundays.
No, we had that really lovely event on the 30th, and we did have a few hundred people come through over the course of the day. We had music, and we had, we had some vendors.
No, I was here, I heard it. I know, I know when you had it. No, I was home and I heard it. I mean, it was kind of loud, but, you know, that, that, you could get that anywhere. But, you know, just, I don't...
Well, we want to be good neighbors, and I definitely do not, this is not going to be like a party place. It's not going to be one of those kind of, that's not the goal.
Let me ask you folks, do you have, if you could host an event there every day that you're open, would you do that, or is your thought you would only have it twice a week, three times a week? Would you be willing to put a self-imposed limit on the number of events per week? Or do you not want to?
Per week.
Yeah, per week.
So, can we define what an event is? Because if I have a class of homeschoolers coming to do environmental education, is that an event?
Good question. And so let's say, let's say yes. Let's be conservative in our question and say yes.
So if I was going to do agritourism like other farms around here and what they're trying to do, we would want to have two or three classes a day if we could possibly do that?
Okay.
And that they would be there for about two hours during the weekday, and they would absolutely be gone by 4 o'clock.
But that's not using the barn either. I mean...
For presentation.
But I do have a question about it.
Pretty much, they take a tour of the gardens, you know, like we have...
But I do have a question about that. Does that inquire, are we going to have buses come in?
Buses?
We've been having buses come in.
School buses?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
I haven't seen any school buses.
Well, that, maybe that's a good thing. If you haven't seen them, then maybe they haven't been that obtrusive.
No, it's, I mean, there's, you know, like 30 kids, 25 kids.
Okay.
And when, when were the buses coming in? Because I hadn't seen any, because the school wasn't in session.
Yeah, we haven't had...
Not this summer. We've had them, we've had them the past couple. I mean, we've had them over the past, we've been there 10 years now, and we've had the school buses coming through right along. They come through, they, they learn how to plant plants, and learn how to take a plug and, and put it in, you know, replant a plug, and how to do those kinds of things. We've had that right along.
That's what, when they wanted to put the tubing in, that's why they were considering another lane, because buses and children in a turning lane, and they found it to be a hazard. And they also, at one time, wanted to put a daycare in there, and they were a little bit up the road, and they turned that down because of busing.
We've had, we had busing from the U.S. Birders Convention that was in Rochester about a year and a half ago, and they brought two buses. That was the most buses that we have ever had.
And we're not talking, and that's not, we're talking about once a month. We're not talking about every week, anyway, with those kinds of things, anyway.
That's true.
But, and it's also during the day.
All right, just to move it along here, we've heard the concerns that Ms. Masaluso has expressed, and she's entitled to have those concerns and express them. And again, at the risk of being redundant, you guys are saying events would be, would not go beyond 8 o'clock. They would only be held the months that we've talked about before. You have ample parking to cover. You would ask for permission to have up to 100 people. Your current intention would be 30. But in the future, once all this business passes, you'd be saying 100, no more than 100. And I'm wondering, did I miss anything else that Ms. Masaluso? You know, the noise, you're going to keep within the noise ordinance?
Absolutely.
Alcohol, we've talked about that. All right, Amy, if I may call you there, do you have any, anything else to add?
I think I'm done. Thank you for listening.
Well, thank you, you're welcome.
Thank you.
All right, have a nice night. Bye-bye.
Bye-bye now. The next call, the next caller we have is Ann Leighton, or Lighton, I apologize, but go ahead and proceed with your questions and comments.
Hi, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Great. Thank you for giving me a chance to talk. My family and I live at 2791 Penfield Road, so we're the next driveway past Amy and John. A lot of my concerns are similar to what Amy had mentioned, and so I'm just going to try to not repeat all of them. But the traffic is certainly a huge concern to us. I find it honestly quite dismissive to, you know, consider that just because we're on the east, we might not be affected by more traffic. I don't, I don't feel like that's a fair consideration. The parking situation, even though people aren't supposed to park on the road, they, they sometimes do. There was just a big estate sale.
Estate sale?
Across the road between our properties, and there were signs everywhere, you know, "Don't park on the road, no parking," and the street was lined. It was a huge safety issue to the point where, you know, anyone on, on the south side of Penfield Road really could not safely pull out of their driveway. So, I'm not anticipating traffic to that extent, you know, after hearing, you know, what's proposed. However, I don't think that we can completely, you know, alleviate that from our list of concerns. The noise is certainly already an issue for us. We hear the trucks going whenever they are there, so any additional noise will absolutely affect us. We are outside as much as we possibly can, trying to enjoy, you know, the space that we do have. And we like the quiet, the extent that we can have it. And again, you know, there's not a lot of quiet time with the traffic noise. So I'm, I was happy to hear that the intention is not for evening, you know, late night events. I guess I, after hearing kind of the proposed, you know, the interactions so far, you know, it seems like a lot of this is what the hope is, what the plan is. And my concern is, what is the reality going to be a year or two from now? Personally, I love the idea of the educational things, especially for kids. And I think that's great if it's, you know, if it can be a manageable number, and it's not going to really impact traffic much. However, I'm concerned that in time, you know, this might become a bigger event space, and I don't honestly have any sense of what kind of safety, you know, like what is in place to prevent that from happening, you know, to prevent the nature of the event from changing from what we're talking about today to potentially much bigger events down the road. I don't know who monitors that. I don't know, you know, and so I'm open to feedback or whatnot, but, you know, those are, I think, the biggest concerns that, that we have at this.
Yeah, so to answer, to answer some of your questions, if I may, if this is approved with a limit of 100 people, the town will monitor that, and frankly, probably the neighbors too.
Right.
So, we will all be watching if that happens. Same thing with the noise, same thing with the parking. I guess I'd ask, though, I'm listening to the caller maker points, and just wondering whether the applicants would be, would consider a, let's call it a trial period of maybe two or three years, to see how things go. We're getting two nods from you, so, okay.
Yeah.
Well, that's a good trial, because if it isn't doing anything in three years, we don't want to do it anymore either.
All right, well...
No, I, I think that's very fair. We really do want to demonstrate.
If we can't teach in the three years, there's no reason to keep doing it.
How about two years, then?
Two years is fine.
Two years is fine. Look at you, folks, you're being quite reasonable. All right. Ann, I didn't mean to cut you off. Do you have anything else you want to mention? And your email's part of the record as well.
Yeah, no, I think, I think between, you know, my comments and Amy and John's concerns, I think we've covered pretty much, pretty much everything.
Okay, good.
But I appreciate you taking the time to share the concern.
All right, well, thank you for calling in.
Can I just make one comment?
Sure.
When we're talking about that estate sale?
Yeah.
We actually, we were so concerned, we called the police a couple times.
No, we called the town.
And we called the town. We wanted to figure out how to stop that from happening, because it was scary.
Yeah, well, that's, that's good.
People parked on both sides of the road.
And, okay, well, hopefully nobody got hurt. All right.
No, they didn't.
Well, thank you again, Ann, for your calls. I don't see anybody else on the phone. I do have an electronic comment that was submitted at 8:20 PM, so somebody was anxious to get to this application. I'm just going to read it. It's from Matt Jewett, J-E-W-E-T-T, at 2771 Penfield Road. And he writes, "I am very supportive of Al and Lori's plan for agritourism, and I have no doubt that they will do an excellent job. They have done a great job at the garden center and have been good neighbors. I have had the opportunity to speak directly to them about their plans. The only concern that I have raised to them and will raise to you is about noise. I would like to verify that this conditional use permit will not impact Section 250-7.6 of the zoning ordinance regarding noise, and that will still be in effect." I'm assuming that's a noise ordinance?
Yep.
The answer to that is yes. "While I do not feel that all of Al and Lori's plans for events will cause any noise concerns, I do not fully understand how long these permits are in effect." I think we've addressed that for this particular one. "What happens if there is an ownership transfer?" The answer to that is, if the new owner wants to continue, new owner's got to come in and get permission. "And what precedent being permitted as an events venue sets for future use of the property?" Well, I guess I'd comment to that is that there will actually be a written resolution that sets the parameters of the use, if it gets approved, and any change from that, well, and certainly any increase from that, those parameters, you'd have to come back in and seek that formally again. So hopefully that addresses Matt's email, and he certainly, the biggest concern, again, that he raised is noise, and I think we've addressed that. I'll go back one more time to the phone calls. I see none. Do we have any further questions or comments from the board members? No, we don't. Okay, well, then I'm going to proceed on the seeker aspect of this. I'm going to make a motion to declare this a type 2 action under seeker, and no further seeker review would be necessary.
Second.
Second.
We have three seconds on that. How about that? Everybody's ready to go. They all seconded it so quickly.
It's Mike.
We're going to give that one to Mike, too, for our home audience. So, my motion to declare it a type 2, seconded by Mike. Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now, as far as the application goes, I am going to make a motion to approve a conditional permit for a period of two years. I'm probably going to miss some, so I'll first say, with the conditions that the applicants have agreed to throughout this presentation, including but not limited to compliance with the noise ordinance, compliance with all traffic and parking regulations of the town, limiting it to 100 people, limiting it to no later than 8 o'clock at night during the months of May through, including the end of October, comply with all fire marshal requirements that I understand the fire marshal's going to review. And anything else?
I think you got them all.
Yeah, I do.
Wow. And I'm true, I'm exhausted, but so, good, some part of me is still working, I guess. Okay, so that's my motion.
Second.
Once again, we have more than one second, which is great. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All right, folks, well, thank you very much. Make us all proud, I suppose, and we'll see you in two years, if not sooner.
Hopefully sooner. Take care.
Have a good Thanksgiving.
Please give a second.
The second goes to Marie. How about that, Andres?
I pointed to her already, so that's good, yeah. When in doubt, not me, so it's fine.
Okay, so we're to the last application, I think.
All right.
If they're still on the phone.
Tri-State Construction Incorporated, 13 Buckeye Lane, Smyrna, Delaware, 19977. Tri-State Construction Incorporated, 13 Buckeye Lane, Smyrna, Delaware, 19977. Request an area variance under Section 250-14.3 of the code to allow a concrete putting green with less setback than permitted under Section 250-5.2-D2 of the code at 2250 Penfield Road. Property is currently or formerly owned by Hidden Creek D E L L C and is zoned multiple residents, SBL number 140.01-1-10. This is application number 20Z-0043.
Okay, thank you, Andy. And if we can have the applicant give us name and address, and then proceed with the presentation. Perhaps.
Hi, can you hear me?
Now we can, yep, great.
Okay, sorry. I've been listening all night, and of course, I don't get this right when I need to. I have my video on, too, but it's not cooperating. Hi, everybody. Well, last but not least, my name is Lauren Workheiser. I am the Design Director for Morgan Properties, and we manage and oversee ownership of Pembroke Meadows, which is the property that we are discussing this evening. I am representing both the property, the management company, and our vendor, Tri-State Construction. The reason for our application is our vendor was installing several, I think 55 putting greens in upstate New York for us. We acquired a bunch of assets there, October of last year. So they're a vendor we use locally. Our headquarters is in King of Prussia, Pennsylvania, right outside of Philadelphia. So we sent them up there for a blitz, and they were responsible for installing a lot of our dog parks and our putting greens at all of our assets. And with doing that, they're also responsible for pulling permits where applicable. We actually don't really have to pull permits for these a lot of times, but I mean, every township is different, and, and we're sensitive to that, of course. And we're also new in the neighborhood of upstate New York, so there's a learning curve there. But the reason that I am on the call is I essentially am responsible for where this is located. Part of our strategy with Morgan Properties when locating new amenities for our residents, which we have, I've got a list here, there is 350 units at Pembroke Village. So ballpark, we have, you know, 500-plus residents there. Our goal with adding new amenities to any property is always to put them, A, along the tour path for a sale's perspective, easier to show, easier for new residents to see, to identify, because we like to keep our tours efficient. And given current circumstances, a lot of them have been virtual. And we're always looking to locate amenities together and in grouping. So what you're looking at right now is what I'm referring to as our main entrance, but the property has several entrances along Pembroke Drive. But this is where the office is located. So residents or new prospective residents that visit the community will frequent this parking lot. So you can't see it, I don't know if you can scroll down or if there's a better view in the other image, but yeah, so the pool is also off of that area, in addition to an outdoor deck where we have grilling and picnic tables, and then there's a double tennis court behind it. So while the property is very large, and, you know, some might argue that there's many locations that these could have been placed, I mean, our goal is always convenience and access to residents, not hiding amenities, having them in plain sight. We also have cameras along the exterior of our office building so that these areas can be monitored and watched, because safety is, you know, of the utmost concern for us always and first and foremost for our residents. And, you know, I, I have to say, when we were looking, you know, we pulled the site survey for every property when making these, and I think it was just a lapse in, in understanding the setback rule, because we checked it out, made sure there were no utilities there, made sure we were not in a sewer easement, you know, our typical checklist that we'll go down when making these decisions. And I just think that they forgot to check the setback before they installed it. So the reason for our variance request is because we could not submit the building permit because it was already installed, and within the setback there, for Andy had mentioned, you know, we needed to then go this route. So, and I heard it clarified when we first started the meeting that the discussion is not about the dog park, but the putting green solely. And I believe there was also a question regarding signage for the putting green. So typically, we install, like, basic green flags. So like what you would see on a typical putting green, a post with a blue flag that has the number on it. And typically, there's three to four flags on there, because obviously there are holes throughout the turf area. We like to have something inside of them to identify the hole, make sure people are, you know, watching where they're walking. And I actually do have photos. Is there any way for me to share my screen?
Sure.
If I can do it right.
That doesn't look like a putting green.
Okay, can you see my screen?
That looks nice, though, too.
So these are some that we've, we've already installed at different locations.
I can't see your screen.
No.
It's not up yet.
We can't see, we can't see your screen.
And I apologize. It's probably my fault.
Do I have to request access? Hold on one second. Can you see it?
Not yet.
Not, well, there it is. There we go. We see it. Yes, we can see it. Mike, can you see it?
I can't.
All right, good. Go ahead.
So this is just an example. Basically, that's all concrete underneath of the turf. They go in, they install, you know, four inches. There's a bed, a bed of rock underneath. There's cups in there that they then daylight. And then we've been doing this river rock border around the outside to try and, you know, make the transition seamless, no curbs. Before, we actually used to do a Belgium block border here. But, so this is just a typical example. Here's another property. Again, you'll see, we try to group a lot of our amenities together for convenience for our residents, for maintenance purposes, for security purposes, for tour path purposes. And I think from reading the emails that Andy was nice enough to share with me, I don't think that the argument here is, is the aesthetic of the putting green. I just think the question was signage, and then also, obviously, that it's within the setback of the street and not far back enough from where it would need to be, and it's already installed. So our vendor is really hoping that, you know, with this application, that we will be forgiven for making this error, and then we don't have to demo it and take it out. I'm trying to see if there's another. Show you. No, that's not it. I had the site map up earlier. So, yeah, this was the site survey. So this is kind of what we were looking at initially. It's just the, the missteps of the, the distance from here to here that we missed. And I know that a lot of these buildings are grandfathered in, because there are some that are fairly close, and, and I don't know if they're necessarily the full setback from the road, but, yeah, I mean, like I said, this was not, and by any means to pull a fast one. We, we have over 300 properties now in 15 states, and this is kind of just like pretty turnkey for us, but our vendors are pretty good about doing their research and their legwork. And I think that this one just slipped through the cracks, unfortunately, and it got installed. And now here we are with it in the ground and completed, and, and having this, this conversation. So with that, I will turn it over to you guys if you have any questions for me.
Thanks for that presentation. You did answer a lot of my questions. I just had a couple more. Is the putting green accessible 24/7?
It is, but all of our residents sign an amenity addendum in their lease that basically says any outdoor amenities are only permitted to, are not permitted to be used between the hours of dusk to dawn. So, you know, from sunrise to sunset, they, or I'm sorry, the opposite way. They are not permitted to use them. We don't light them at night. We don't encourage them to use them at night. That being said, our residents do sometimes use the dog park if they're taking their dogs out at night, which is why we do like to at least have things on camera. But I mean, we do have an agreement in writing with all residents of the hours of operation for all amenities indoor and outdoor.
Okay. So my comments are specific to the putting green, just so you know. So are there any plans to install a fence or lighting around this area?
As of now, there were not, no, but that's certainly something that, you know, we're happy to, to, to consider or to do, if that's going to mean, you know, letting us keep it where it's located.
Mm-hmm. Where do people get their equipment for that putting green? Do they bring their own?
We do encourage them to BYO, especially now with COVID. We're not, we're not really leasing out a lot of our accessories and letting people use our stuff. And we also started doing that because we found that by just lending out putters, that a lot of children were then using this inappropriately. So we, you know, this is really intended to be a putting green and not a miniature golf course. So we do encourage people that have clubs, that are golfers, that are interested in practicing their putting, to bring their own, and that, you know, has been typically what we've seen across our portfolio.
Okay. If you had to, if you, if this were not approved and you had to relocate it, where would you relocate this?
I'm not sure if we would. It's hard to say. I mean, unfortunately, with a new startup community, we have partners that we have to answer to in dollars and cents, so whether or not they would approve the expense of reinstalling this, it's hard for me to say at this point.
Do you know about how much it would be?
I'm sorry, say that again?
I'm sorry to interrupt. Do you know about how much it would be to reinstall it?
So the typical cost to install a putting green would be $13,000.
All right. I don't have any more questions.
May I just ask, since you've put it up, have you had any complaints about it?
No, and, you know, honestly, residents have just been anxious. You know, we were buying over 200 properties in the last year. You know, obviously, we couldn't get everything done at one time. So, you know, marketing's been telling them things are coming, you know, putting green's coming, dog park's coming. So I think they were just really relieved and happy to finally have something. And this, these both, I believe, were completed in July or over late summer. So, I mean, to my knowledge, we have not received any negative complaints or anything that, you know, has indicated that residents are not happy with these new additions.
Well, that's good. The, the only issue or concern that I have, and it's good to hear there haven't been any complaints, is because of the variance request and it, you know, it's not close to traffic, but it's in the vicinity of traffic. Is there going to be any requirement for adult supervision if, if children want to use it?
So typically, our policy with amenities is anyone under the age of 16, for all amenities, must be accompanied by an adult, and that's part of our policy and something that they sign.
Good.
And then we usually, depending on the amenity, we then have rules posted. So for the putting green, you know, we've tried rules in the past, but we just thought they were kind of ridiculous. So, you know, the dog park specifically has rules posted, you know, about leashing their dog, and if anyone's aggressive, removing it right away, like things that have more of a risk management factor, we tend to make sure that we have rules posted. But, I mean, every resident has electronic copies of rules for all amenities, and children are not to be using these unattended at any time.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board members? I, I know that I've, I used to go to that miniature golf course down by Seabreeze, and there were plenty of times I should have had adult supervision, Mike. You know what I'm talking about? That windmill? Go down to the reunion for a, for a nice dinner and then try to put that ball through the windmill? Forget about it. All right, enough of that, Tomfoolery. So let's proceed with the Seeker, because I don't have any phone calls on this, nor do I have any electronic submissions.
Great. So I'd like to move that this is a Type 2 action pursuant to Seeker, requiring no further review.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And I'd actually also like to make a move to approve this variance. Basically, I understand the rationale for why you placed the putting green where you did. And I do think safety is a factor, particularly when you have kids maybe with irons in their hand, that you would really want to keep an eye on them. I understand that. It does sound like it would be a substantial burden to move the putting green at this point. And I don't think it will have adverse impact. The one thing I would say is that you do need to comply with any signage, you know, regulations for the town. I know you have the flags, and I think that's fine, but I don't see the need for it to be fenced in with, you know, other signage involved.
Okay, understood. Yeah, I just wanted to get clarity if the flags were permissible then. Okay.
I can't imagine that they wouldn't be, because to me, it is a safety issue, because you want to see that there's a hole there.
Right.
But correct me if I'm wrong, Andy or other board members.
Well, those are not standard, those are not standard putting green flags. Usually, there, there's no flag on them, like a post, yeah, like about three feet, two feet high.
I'm sorry, Mike, I couldn't hear the beginning part.
Usually, the flags on a putting green are not flags. They're just posts, maybe two and a half, three feet high.
Yeah, when, when Mike's talking about, when you go to a course that has a practice green, the flags are much shorter. They don't have the full six foot or whatever a regulation flag is on a, on a course. But I don't, do you care?
Well, but given the fact that it's residential and people are walking through, it's not a golf course, per se, I think they should be.
The smaller.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
They won't block any views from cars or bicycles either with the bigger flags.
Somebody could take a seven-wheeler and go 130 yards away.
So you actually, it's the smaller, smaller flags, Lauren.
Okay.
And then also that, you know, I would just ask that, that for this variance, that, you know, everything, everybody complies with all the regulations set forth by, by the Pembroke Apartments. And that means, you know, supervising kids under 16 in particular.
Sure, absolutely. Yes, understood.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve. I'll take that as. Do we have a second?
Second.
I'm going to give that one to Andres. He beat you to the buzzer. All right, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you for the presentation. Happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you so much, everyone. You as well. Thank you.
Okay, I think that was the last application, so we have a couple tabled matters for the December meeting. Any other business? Okay, folks, great job tonight, everybody. Longest agenda we've had since COVID hit, and everybody did, everybody did yeoman's work. So thank you very much. Christine, take care. Happy Thanksgiving to everybody. Enjoy the holiday as best you can, and we'll see you next month.
Sounds good.
Good night.
Bye-bye.
Good night.